Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Larkspur City Council meeting. It is October the 2nd at 6:30. Allison, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Harrow.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Helmer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chu.
Here.
Mayor Morrison.
Here. And if you're able to, please stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you. So do we have any public comment? Public comment that is not on the agenda tonight? Please come up and state your name and address.
Cindy Winter, 826 South Aliseo, Greenbrier. Since we're talking fire tonight, I thought I'd add sea level rise. About 10 days ago, I happened to chat with Jim Andrews, the Cortumadera Town Council member, as this council knows. And he talked in some detail about the town's new sea level rise study initiated this year to continue in total for three years. An interim report will be presented soon before year's end. Jim seemed intent that Larkspur residents know about the report. I guess this council is aware, but I thought I'd mention it for others here this evening or who watch the tape. The study runs along San Clemente, where the highway patrol offices are, east along Paradise to the Cove School, Montessori School, and Marin Country Day, then swings northerly along the marshes to Cortumadera Creek, and back again, south, I assume, along Tamil Vista to Tamil Pious in San Clemente. Cortumadera DPW Director Peter Brown is in charge, using established scientific studies. Those interested can sign up with the town to receive email notices of town council meeting agendas.
Great. Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public comment. Tonight, we have two presentations. 3.1, we're going to have a Bon Air Bridge Replacement Project, along with the Measure B Pavement Repair Program. I believe our Public Works Department, I believe Julian Skinner, you're going to give those?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of council, members of the public. Julian Skinner, Public Works Director. First of our Capitol project updates tonight is for the Bon Air Bridge. So far, we've been coming to you in spring and fall with updates on what's going on out on that project. And so this is our latest update. Do a little bit of project review. As I said, we've been here before, so we'll just go over some of the, a little bit of the history. Do a construction update to let folks know what's been going on out there for the last six months. And then we always, in our projects, like to do a little bit of a check-in on the cost and the schedule to see how we're doing. And then we'll look at the schedule moving forward to see what's coming up next, and then have a little bit of time for some questions. So just some of the history, some of the previous council actions on this. We did go out to public bid for this project, awarded a contract to Golden State Bridge out of Benicia. They have four years and one month to get the project complete, mostly due to us keeping the bridge open during construction and having to build it in two halves, and also because of the environmental constraints at that site, certain times of the year where we can't undertake certain activities. Their contract award amount was $26.7 million, and they started work on May 23rd of last year. So we were last here in spring with an update. At that time, we talked about the work up to that point, which was the demolition, partial demolition of the bridge to allow the construction of the new bridge. The trestle installation, which is the temporary wooden bridges that you see out there, and then also the cast-in-drilled-hole piles. So there's four eight-foot diameter, about 100-foot-deep piles out there that will ultimately support the bridge. On the north side, there will be another four on the south side. So since we were last with you, the four piles on the north side of the bridge were complete. This is a photo looking from the trestle with the old bridge in the background. It's covered in black tarp there, but that's the, one of the piles protruding out from the water. And it has framing around it to cast a cap for the girders to sit on. And so that was what occurred in summer of this year. Basically, they frame a cage out of the purple epoxy-coated rebar for these bent caps, and then these sit on top of those piers. And so this is the finished product. Again, I'm looking from the trestle on the north side of the bridge. The old bridge is in the background, so you see the pile coming out of the water, and then the cap that is cast on top of the pile. And so these are parallel with the creek or perpendicular to the road, and these will support the girders that the bridge deck will ultimately be cast on top of. So here is the first girder install. So this was when we closed the bridge for a week just before school started. This time, I'm standing on the old bridge, and the workers in the foreground are standing on one of those bent caps. And the large crane here is placing a girder onto one of those bent caps. So these girders span between the bent caps, and there's going to be three rows of these girders on this half of the bridge. And so this is the finished girder install. So there's three rows of girders that go from east side to west side. And there are four vents or piles in the creek, and then the two abutments on each side. So there's six spans of these girders, times three lengths, so there's 18 of these girders were dropped onto the bridge in August. So here's an aerial view. Now I'm, this is looking from Magnolia, so now we're following in line with the bridge. And so I think I showed this slide last time, but you've got the two trestles or the two outermost components here, the north side and the south side trestle. And then working from the left to the right, the next is the three lines there, those are the girders. And then the old bridge and the south trestle. So again, these arrows show where those bent caps are in the creek. And then here's the girders that were set on top of those bent caps. In addition to just building a bridge and the street approaches out there, we have utilities that have to get across the bridge. So this is the water main has been installed, that's what this photo is, but there's also PG&E and Comcast lines that are built into the bridge. They reimburse us for those costs. We pay for them, and then they reimburse us. There's also city utilities for streetlights and seismic instrumentation that will be installed on the bridge, too. So what they're doing now is they're framing for the deck. So the bent caps went on, the girders went across, and now they have to cast a bridge deck, which is what you will drive on ultimately, on top of these girders. So I'm standing actually on the middle girder now, and so there's the three girders, three rows of girders we looked at before. And now you'll see all kinds of plywood and masonite forming the frame so that they can pour an eight-inch-thick, eight-inch-thick concrete slab there. That'll take about another week and a half or so, and then you'll see all kinds of that purple rebar showing up again, all through where they're going to pour this eight-inch deck. So this whole surface here will get covered with layers and layers of that purple rebar before they cast the bridge deck. Tentatively, that bridge deck is scheduled to be poured all in one day, so it'll be a long day, about 300 yards of concrete, tentatively set for late October, around the 24th or the 25th. And then that bridge deck will cure, and then they'll put the railing up, and they'll get it ready for traffic so that they can flop traffic over to the north side, and then they can start demolishing the south side. So that arrow just shows the extent of, in this photo, where the bridge deck would be. Some of the other work that took place, we totally rebuilt the north side of Bon Air Road from the medical offices entrance over to Magnolia. So we took it down about 14 inches, put all-new asphalt in. We also did the same thing with the intersection of Bon Air and Magnolia. We did this over a weekend, put the new signals up, and opened up the crosswalks before school started this year. And here is just for some of the folks that look at how the new bridge and the old bridge and the phasing of what we're doing. So the first thing we did was we cut a little piece off the north side of the old bridge, and then the traffic is on the rest of the old bridge that was left. So this is looking from Magnolia towards South Aliseo. And then on the left is what we've been and are still building. So we started with the piles in the water, then we did the bent caps, and then we did the girders, and are currently doing the bridge deck, and we'll do the railing before we open it up. Then when that's finished, they'll flop over, put the traffic on that north side, demolish the south side, and they'll do the same thing in reverse. They'll go and they'll start with the piles on the south half, ultimately end up with the two bridges, and do a closure port to join them together. Here is the cost tracking and the schedule. We're 528 days into our 1,491-day schedule, so we're about 35% of the way through the time the contractors allotted. And if you go down to the bottom line, we've paid about $10.4 million, so they've got about 40% of the work done, and they're about 35% through the time. So we're still tracking a little bit ahead of schedule. Change orders, the sum total to date is about $270,000 or so. So right now, they've only used about 10% of the 10% allowance, so overall, about 1% change orders so far. And then this is the tracking form. Where in the far-right column, we're noting when certain milestones get finished, and on the left, kind of crossing over when we get through everything. So they're still kind of on schedule now. We're at the stage where they should be doing the bridge deck, which was scheduled for summer, fall, where's end of summer, beginning of fall, and that's what we're doing. They were a little ahead of schedule on building the south trestle. That was going to be fall. They actually did it in the summer. And then you can see what some of the upcoming tasks are. Shifting the traffic to the south side of the bridge. Winter, we're hoping to do that by January 15th, because that's when the bird shows up in the marsh. And if we don't get it by January 15th, then we have to wait a few months to get that done. So that is the push at the moment, is to get everything finished so we can get the traffic on the north side of the bridge by January 15th. And then when the traffic is on the new bridge, then they can start demolishing the old bridge. And then from there, as I said, they'll do the same thing on the south side they did on the north. Wait for the water window till they can get in, June 15th of next year, they'll start doing the piles for the south side. This is the overall schedule, same one I showed last time. I've just moved the blue line over to show where we are. At the top, you've got the constraints for the clapper rail or Ridgeway rail and the steelhead. Then at the bottom, it kind of shows a calendar and the things we're doing. The top of the calendar bar there is the north side of the bridge, the bottom is the south side. We're actually a little ahead of schedule, but because of the environmental restrictions, it's not going to matter. We're going to hit a point where we have to stop for a few months anyway, but they are a little ahead of schedule. So upcoming work, we do also have some storm drain work that needs to take place just behind the Hillview subdivision. There's still a PG&E conflict that we're waiting to get resolved. And then, as I mentioned, on the north side, the rebar and installing the concrete for the bridge deck. Then they've removed the north side trestle, get the traffic on the new north side of the bridge, then they'll start demolishing the south side of the bridge. And then they cannot get in the water until June 15th to start the piles for the south side of the bridge. We've still got our website up and running. Anybody who wants updated newsletters, there's also an email contact on there and a hotline phone number. The hotline is not for emergencies. If you think there's something out there that's an emergency, call the Public Works, or if it's an emergency, emergency, call 911. But that is for project information, if folks want to know about schedule and stuff like that. So we'll be back before you in spring, when hopefully we'll have traffic on the north side of the bridge available for any questions.
Dan?
How are expansion joints handled?
So there are a series of expansion joints, and where you'll see them, for the most part, is there will be some steel plates in the sidewalk. There has to be gaps in between certain parts of the bridge so that it can move thermally. And there will be plates over that so that you don't actually see that gap, and they're kind of hinged, and they slide over one another. And the ones on the sidewalk are a little trickier because they have to meet ADA, so they can only be so thick so that they don't cause a tripping hazard.
Maybe in the future, a slide showing that.
Sure.
Those components would be helpful.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Kevin?
Just a quick one, Julian. When I went through the intersection of Bon Air and, yeah, Bon Air this weekend, I noticed a camera on top of the light pole. Can you explain what the purpose of those cameras are?
Yeah, so the cameras at the signalized intersections are for video detection of vehicles. And when they're hooked up to the controller for the intersection, they're like the old traffic loops that used to be under the pavement that can sense when vehicles there. They're used to change the lights and time the lights from green to yellow and then to red. At the moment, those cameras are not active at those intersections because we have some of the lanes not exactly where they're supposed to be. We're working with the contractor now to get the cameras at Magnolia and Bon Air aligned with the temporary lanes so we can use them. Right now, that intersection is in fixed time, so you get there, and each leg has a certain amount of green time. Doesn't matter what the stacks of traffic are. Our consultants have timed it for the peak hour on Magnolia. So if you get there at a non-peak hour, you may spend more time at a red light when there's no traffic in the other direction. But once we get the cameras rolling, it will be able to detect traffic. And in situations like that, it will be able to flop the lights over and give the green where the green is needed.
Okay.
We're going to be a little bit behind that schedule on South Aliseo because those signals still need to be updated, so they're going to be in fixed time for a while. South Aliseo gets a little less traffic, and one of the other changes we made there, based on some feedback from the community, was we changed that light so that overnight it goes to a red flash, so it essentially becomes a stop in all directions, which means if you get there in the middle of the night, you don't have to wait 30 seconds for no traffic on Bon Air. It'll be a full stop, so if there's no traffic, you can stop and go after hours.
Thank you. Kevin?
Thanks very much, Julian, for that presentation. It's like watching an epic movie in slow motion, but it's getting there, and it's rewarding to see it all happen. So I just had a couple of quick questions, and one of them was just answered, which had to do with the signaling issue. So that's fine. One just curiosity question. There's an AT&amp;T trunk line that goes through this area. Is that impacting, or is there any relevance to what AT&amp;T's trunk line to the Pacific is in that location?
So AT&amp;T, so we didn't see AT&amp;T in the list of utilities.
That's why I asked the question, yeah.
That I showed before, because AT&amp;T actually relocated their lines before our project. They bore under the creek and relocated all of their lines under the creek rather than being on the bridge. They do still have some connections on either side that they're still actively swapping over, and I think probably in the years leading up to this project, you many a times saw an AT&amp;T truck out parked on either end of the bridge. They had a lot of splicing, and they still actually have a couple of lines that are in the bridge, but most of their infrastructure is in the bore under the creek.
When did they do that?
Before I was here, yeah.
Oh, so that was all, that has not had an impact on the bridge? Okay, that was just a question.
Yeah, they were finished with their relocate before we started our project.
Okay, great, thank you.
When you first saw the intersection of Magnolia and Bon Air being disrupted, that was initially to stage for the boring project, not the bridge project.
Okay, all right. Well, maybe that's just something I didn't remember well. And kind of related general question, has there been any impacts from the hospital project on our progress with the bridge? Because they've been working hard on getting that thing done.
No, our construction managers have been coordinating with theirs. They have deliveries, and they have lane closures, and so do we, and we've been working together for the most part, and we haven't gotten each other's way, so.
Okay, well, that's good. And then the last question is, I mean, I know there was some talk a few months ago about possible opportunities for, you know, maybe some expedition in the schedule that might have involved some unplanned closures of the bridge. Where does that stand? Are we, is that discussion over with, or is that still up there?
Yeah, so in a conversation with the contractor, he did propose an option for accelerating the schedule, which included, this happened right after we did the one-week bridge closure.
Right.
He came up with an idea of if we could do another closure but have it be longer, he could shave some time off the schedule. But it needed a lot of things to fall into place, and those, a lot of those things were not in our control. They required variances to permits and extensions to permits. And it also would have required, just because of the way all the permit windows overlap, it would have required us turning something around and saying yes in about two weeks. And with those permit uncertainties, it just wasn't something that we could pull together and be comfortable with, because it was going to be an increased cost. And if we didn't get the permit extensions, then we would lose any advantage of accelerating. So it didn't, in the end, it didn't pencil. But the contractor and our construction manager are always talking about ways to either shave time off the project or save cost, and we've already gone through a couple of value engineering proposals that we brought to you earlier that have been cost savings on the project.
Okay, that's great. That's it. Thanks very much for that.
Julian, it's pretty impressive, the change order. I know we're only in it for the second year, but 1%, that's pretty impressive.
Yeah, so I want to be completely transparent. So that is a net change order, so there have been some change orders where we've saved money, too. So the 1% is a net of change orders, including the ones where we've actually saved money. But still, that's, the bottom line is 1%.
Good, good, good. And then the clapper rail. I thought it's been two years since we've seen a clapper rail. You still need to have, is it one more year that we need to be?
Until they tell us we don't have to. Even though we've had negative surveys for as long as I've been here, every year, they tell us you have to go out and do the survey again. Now, the clapper rail is only an issue on the north side of the bridge, so this is the last year we potentially have to deal with it. If we get the north side of the bridge open by January 15th, we don't have clapper rail restrictions on the south side of the bridge.
Good to know.
Just fish restrictions.
Okay, great.
It's not the clapper rail anymore, it's something else, right?
It's the Ridgway rail, yes.
The Ridgway rail, okay. Great. Any other questions? Okay, Dan Helmer.
Julian, just on behalf of the council, and would you please communicate to all your staff and the consultants, and Dan Schwartz, too, all the staff? I think Kevin was not joking around when he used the word epic describing this project. And we don't want to take for granted how hard everybody's working to make sure all the interests are balanced over the long construction period. You make it look a lot easier than it is, I know. I just want to make sure you know that we're grateful.
Thank you.
It's so impressive to watch.
Here, here for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Julian. All right, off to the next important, impressive Measure B update.
Okay, moving on.
Thanks, Julian.
So the next presentation is update on Measure B. And so this is kind of an annual report. We usually come and give you a summary of what we've done on this year's paving project. And this is the first year of Measure B paving project. It's been Measure C previously. And so Measure B was the Larkspur Street Repair and Essential Services Measure. It was on the ballot two years ago. And then shortly after that, we did analysis of all our streets that hadn't been paved over the last five years, and came up with a Measure B paving plan to pave all of those streets. And that was presented and adopted by council in May of 2018. And the program basically involved, in addition to paving all of those streets, doing some immediate patch paving in some of the worst areas, and then also all of the ADA and miscellaneous street improvements that go along with paving. So this is the table that was a part of the adoption of the Measure B plan. We broke it down into a number of projects, and then wanted to get everything paved in five years, so we crammed everything into four years, giving us a year on the end to catch anything that falls out for various coordination reasons. And so as we look at the two projects that were scheduled for 2019, we had project number one, and then we also had the ramp project or the ADA project. So project number one, there is group one, that's the project that was recently completed. There's an item on your consent agenda tonight for accepting that project. And we had just under $4.1 million earmarked for that project, and the final construction cost came in at about $3.25, so under budget. The ramps, we had budgeted $1.46, and we've awarded a contract to Gelotti Brothers. They're about to start work. Their low bid was $1.69, so that one was a little bit over budget, but the net is still under budget to this point. The total Measure B project there, you see on the left in that first column, is just under $26 million. So next year's projects, project two, some creative project naming here, but that's just what we landed on. And then recon one, which is the streets that need a little bit more work, reconstruction or some full-depth repairs. Those are both under design right now and scheduled to be repaved next year. This is, the next one is a project that's going to get pushed. This is our recon two project. We'll get into that a little bit later, but this is a project that, for various reasons, we've decided to push out another year or so. Going back to this year's project, just under seven miles of streets, mainly up in the Greenbrier Hills, but we did also go out in Madrone Canyon, do the rest of Madrone all the way up Wilson, and do the loop streets. The first piece of work most people noticed was the grinding of the street. We take the old, bad asphalt off the street. And then also, a lot of these streets just received a new surface layer of asphalt, but we do more than just that. I know some folks were concerned that their streets were in really bad shape and thought we should be completely rebuilding them. But what we do is we go out, and in this photo, it shows that there was an area of the street that was failed. We dig that out and we replace it before we overlay the street. So even though most of these first-year streets are just overlays, we're still digging out the really bad areas and replacing that asphalt first. If there's so many dig-out areas and so many bad areas, then it gets into one of those recon projects where we just dig the whole street out. But this is an example of where we identified a bad area of the street, we repaired it. And then typically, what they'll do is after they've ground out the street to take the bad asphalt from the top, they'll put a level course down, a thin layer of asphalt. So this takes care of a lot of the ride quality in the street, also adds a little bit of thickness, and it also helps with reflecting cracking to stop some of the cracks from below from coming up. Then once they've got the surface, sorry, the level course on, then they'll do the actual surface lift, which is typically about a two-inch lift of asphalt that goes from gutter pan to gutter pan. And then we have materials testing companies that are out there to make sure that the asphalt goes down at the right thickness, the right compaction, the right temperature, all of those things. So this map is from the adopted plan, and so this year was the green streets, as I mentioned before, Greenbrier Hills, the loop area, and then out towards the end of Madrone and Wilson. And then we also picked up Larch and, Larch, Lark and Branch. Couple of changes here highlighted. These were streets that were to be done this year, but when we got out there, there was just too many failed areas, and we determined they would be better to be reconstructed than overlaid, so we pulled them out of this year's project. They'll get added into next year's. That's Parkside, a little bit of Villa La Paz, and a little bit of Locust. So for next year, what we're looking at, the streets that are being designed now, is the blue streets. That's a project one, and then the red streets is project two. So the blue streets is any street that we pulled out from last year's project, and then the area kind of the west downtown area, kind of the Locust and Sycamore, and then also Hillview, Creekside, some of the areas on the Greenbrier Hill. And the red streets is Villa Lacumbre, from city limit to city limit. The area that I showed you before, the project that we're going to push out a year, is the industrial area. So that's Rich and Redwood. There's a couple of issues out there. We've identified a drainage issue. We need to add some storm drain. We're not going to have enough time to do that before we pave the street, and we obviously don't want to cut into the street to do the storm drain after we've paved it, so we're going to push that out a year. In addition to that, the project that we're working with TAM on the North-South Greenway is going to come right down Redwood, so we don't necessarily want to repave Redwood and then have all the construction from the North-South Greenway right on top of it. So we're going to coordinate that area with the North-South Greenway project. So earlier this year, we did send out a letter to everybody who lives or owns property on a street that's scheduled to be paved in 2020. It talks about the prohibition of excavation. Folks are not allowed to dig into the street, other than for emergencies, for five years after we pave to protect our investment in the streets. And because of that, we also include, an RVSD, Ross Valley Sanitary District, included a letter with our mailer that talks about their sewer lateral program and their grants that they have available to help people pay if they need to upgrade their sewer lateral. The other thing we tell folks about is if they're thinking of doing a remodel that is going to trigger sprinklers or something like that in their house, it may require them to upsize their water main, that's another reason, their water service, that's another reason why they may need to dig into the street, or they may be required to underground their overhead utility services. These are all things that if somebody has a remodel or planned in the next five years, they may want to think about doing some of these utility upgrades before we pave the street. And then we also included a chart of the proposed streets for next year. There are a couple of changes we're already aware of. Some of them are pending. Some of them, like industrial and rich, we've already decided we're going to push out another year. Creekside, there's currently, the HOA is repairing all the sewers out there in that neighborhood, so if they finish on time, we'll go ahead and pave Creekside. If they don't, we'll push that off another If they don't, we'll push that off another year. We have a storm drain project we're trying to undertake on Cordelejo, so until we complete that, we're not going to pave Cordelejo. And then Hillview, there's a project we're working with flood control on replacing some of the storm drains in Hillview. So we'll have to see how the progression of that project is. At the moment, we're still designing and including Hillview, but we may end up only paving some of the streets that don't end up, or that we don't think are going to have storm drains in them. So we'll be letting folks in that neighborhood know as we get closer whether we'll have to push some of those streets or not to accommodate the storm drain project. And then I talked briefly about the ADA curb ramps. We did go out to bid. We ended up with about 150 curb ramps that we need to install. Basically, anywhere where there's a crosswalk or where a sidewalk touches a street, you need an ADA curb ramp. We worked with a certified access specialist to make sure we're putting them in the right place. This is what they look like when they're complete. This is the entrance to Hillview. Basically, the sidewalk drops down, meets the crosswalk, and there's a yellow truncated dome at the bottom. That work is not as weather-dependent as the paving, so we anticipate that project will keep going all the way through spring. You'll see them in certain areas over the winter. They obviously won't be working when there's really bad weather out there, but they can work in between the storms and do about 10 of these ramps a week, probably. This is the schedule as we last saw it. Last fall, we were still in design and had just gone out to construction for the patch paving. This red bar here shows where we are today, so just to check on schedule. We're about where we should have been with finishing the group one paving. We're in design for group two paving, so those things are on track. The patch paving extended a little bit because we got into rain in November, so we had to finish that up in spring. And as I talked about, the ADA ramp project, ideally, we would have started construction already. That's a little bit behind, but it'll still finish in time for when we need those ramps to be completed. So the schedule looking forward, group two will mirror group one, so we'll be before you, probably February or so, to adopt the plans and go out to bid, and then do those, the paving of those streets next summer. The ADA ramps, we think, will take probably until the end of, to the middle of next year to finish all those ramps. And then, before you know it, we'll be starting, working on designing for group three streets and Sir Francis Drake. Sir Francis Drake is going to be a standalone project, so this is east Sir Francis Drake, which is the city's responsibility. We need to coordinate with Caltrans, and it likely will be night paving, and so it's going to be a standalone project. We'll pull it out from the other streets. But that project, along with the group three, will be scheduled for summer of '21. And that's the end of the Measure B update.
You know, before, when this is all said and done, Larkspur will be known for its best streets and the ADA ramps in the whole state of California. Wow, Julian, you've been busy, still are. Any questions?
No questions, just, again, thanks. So this is like an epic movie as well, but it's in fast motion, as opposed to the bridge. And I think everyone in our community appreciates all the hard work you guys have been doing, and our contractors as well. And I just wanted to note, in that context, that it's important to keep in mind that the road paving project doesn't just benefit Larkspur, it benefits all of our communities in the vicinity, including in particular the Bret Hart neighborhood up above where I live. And I've heard several people express appreciation for the nice, smooth roads that they can now travel along to get down the hill. So thank you so much.
Any other comments? Mary?
Julian, you have projects that you're postponing for a year. And if you hit those situations in year five, then have you done any estimates on whether projects that have to carry over what would have been the last year and what their additional cost would be?
No, so we actually only schedule four years, so that if we had a project in the last year had to be carried over, we still get it done in the five years. We have contingency allowances in all of the projects. We don't think pushing any of these projects out is going to impact the costs as far as escalation goes beyond the contingency allowance that we already have built in. I mean, we would have to see three or four of these projects really get moved down the road in order for us to start looking back at our cost estimates and seeing if we need to make adjustments and not fit within the 26 or so million we have.
Okay, thank you.
And Julian, thanks for the letter that you sent out to Hillview for 2020, because now it gives the HOA the ability to pull the neighborhood together and see if who wants to do the lateral as a group, which can save money. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Dan?
Well, first, I want to say how many positive comments I also have received from both residents and, actually, people outside the community are very impressed by what's being done here in the city. So people are watching you, Julian. In a good way. Storm drain, maybe I missed this before, but are the storm drain improvements that we had identified recently as being required improvements, these are all integrated into the new street improvements? Or is that storm drain improvements? Is that a separate project?
Yes, so this project will take care of some of the minor storm drain improvements, such as catch basins and things like that. We do have some more significant storm drain needs that you'll be hearing about at this November 6 council meeting, when we bring you the storm drain master plan. Those are projects that are in excess of what the Measure B funding has anticipated. Those projects are, some of those projects are going to cost as much as the paving on some of those streets. Those streets have all, we already know where most of those are, and those are in the year four. So when we come to you with a storm drain master plan and you see what some of those costs are, we'll have to start having some conversations about which of those we can do before we pave.
Thank you very much.
So I'm going to leave the council and open up to the public. Anybody from the public like to ask any questions about the two presentations that were just given? I see none. All right, we'll move on. Julian, thank you very much. Standing ovation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we're going to move on to four, approval of the consent calendar. Anybody from the council wants to pull anything, or no? Anybody in the public want to talk about the consent calendar? State your name and address, please.
James Holmes, Larkspur, request to make a comment about 4.2, which is the approval of last, the last meeting's agenda. On the third page, third paragraph, third full paragraph, with regard to the authorization of proceedings in connection with the issuance of bonds to finance buildings, included in the list there is a new city hall. And I'm not suggesting the clerk made a mistake there, because I think that was in the caption, that was in the title of the caption. But I, my question is, is the review of a new city hall actually to be included in the work product that was authorized under this, under this item?
Okay, thank you.
Because this, because the agenda suggests that that is the case.
Right, right. In the minutes, Dan, I recall we were saying that we're going to retrofit city hall.
Yeah, I recall that, too.
No, thanks, James.
I recall that, too, and I recall that the city manager said something to that effect. It may have been a little bit left open, and as I say, the minutes do specifically refer to a new city hall, hence my request for a clarification.
Thanks, James. Good catch.
So we do action minutes. The minutes reflect the action of the council. The council moved the staff recommendation, which should be this verbiage, because that was the verbiage in the staff's recommended action that evening. So that's why it's present the way it is. I think if you would like to watch the video of the meeting, which we incorporate now into the minutes as part of our record, you'll see and hear me emphatically saying that this building is city hall, and the intent here is to invest in this building.
As a new, as a retrofit, as a remodel, I don't remember, we're not going to demolish this building.
No one's, this is a historical building.
Exactly.
I guarantee you that the public would have numerous opportunities to tell us what a terrible idea that is, if we were actually to propose it.
Right.
I think, I think we've covered this. I appreciate Mr. Holmes' caution, but we're not building a new city hall here.
Okay, all right, thank you. So with that, go ahead, Kevin.
No, I just, I think the record's clear on this matter, and I appreciate the issue being highlighted, but I think we resolved our confusion about that last time. So thanks.
All right, so, Dan?
I would just like to put it in the context that we do need the flexibility to be able to consider replacing any and all components, which would fit within the described verbiage.
Yes, and I do think we don't want to get too hung up on what a city hall is. This building's not going anywhere, but all of the council members know that if and when it made sense for some or all of the administrative operation to be in another building, we would talk about that. That's not what we're talking about now, but, so what is city hall? If we're questioning this building, this building's not going anywhere. It does, needs a lot of work, though.
Yes, it does. We all agree on that one. All right.
I'd like to encourage consideration and construction of a 50-story skyscraper for all administrative functions.
Please don't say things like that. You need to now say, "Just kidding." Sorry.
Sorry, "Just kidding."
It's on the record now.
Let's bring it back to the council. May I?
So I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any nays? I see none. Now we're going to have a city manager's report, please.
I'm going to keep this brief, Madam Mayor. We have a lot to cover this evening, but I do want to highlight, for Chief Shirts and his staff, that they're going to be holding an open house on October 12th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 342 Tamalpais Avenue in Cordelejo. That's the main station for Central Marin Fire. You'll be able to take a tour of the station. There'll be a bouncy house for the kids, and probably be some appearances by Sparky the Fire Dog.
And what, what time is that, Dan? On October 12th?
October 12th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Thank you. All right, thank you. I'll go ahead and bring it to the council. Anybody on the council has any reports?
Nothing pressing.
Nothing? Okay, I'll make mine real quick. Attended the Bank of Marin, that was operated by Russ Colombo, Spirit of Marin Awards, and Mary Jane Burke was a keynote speaker. She's just incredible. And Jeff Lane, our resident of, works at Molly Stone's. He was selected by the Larkspur Chamber of Commerce, so he was given an award, and it was, it was well-attended, and Catherine Way was there with me. Twin City Village, we are continuing to grow. The village is run by volunteers. We have members, we have over 50 members, and we're helping the elderly be able to stay in their home as long as possible. So it's quite, it's a startup, and it's doing quite well. We hope Dr. Meredith, Dr. Larry Meredith hopes that next year we can work on making Larkspur age-friendly. He already has a consensus, the consensus form has already been filled out, and he also has a domain ready to go. So I hope the council members keep that in mind for, for next year. Also, we did, Kevin and I went to the unveiling for the new Larkspur Library Community Center, the foundation, put up a new sign in the Rose Lane, so take a look at that. It's lovely. It's called the Common, the Commons at, in Larkspur, and it has a lovely website. It's start of the fundraising for our new library community center. So with that, it was, it was quite a nice unveiling. So I'm done with that. We'll move on to, we don't have any public hearing. We do have some business items. We'll start with 8.1 Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority and Parcel Tax Initiative. So Dan, are we going to have, okay, Scott's going to give a report? And Dan, Schwartz. So this is consideration of a resolution authorizing the city's participation in a joint exercise at Powers Agreement, JPA, to form and participate in the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, and a resolution authorizing a parcel tax on the March 2020 ballot to fund the, to fund the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You'll recall that the item that you're going to consider tonight was brought to you as a generalized presentation several meetings ago by Chief Shirts. A lot's moved in the details since then, and we want to go over some of that with you. But before we do, I thought for the benefit of folks who missed it, it might be worthwhile to start with the video that we showed to you and the community at that last meeting. So with your indulgence, I'd like to play that video now, and then I'll do my presentation.
Wildfires are bigger, burn longer, cause more damage, kill more people than ever before. During the fire siege of 2017, when our friends to the north experienced that disaster, Marin was just one ignition source away from that occurring. We have the same fuel conditions, same weather, and same photography that drove that fire that night.
Fire risk is now a constant threat in California, especially in communities like Marin with less vegetation and development, interstate limited areas of natural open space. Marin's natural beauty and abundant undeveloped lands are considered source fuel for a potentially devastating and fatal wildfire, similar to the ones that have ravaged Sonoma, Napa, Lake County, and Paradise over the past few years. Many Marin neighborhoods are a case in the wild by, because of a strong desire to live close to nature. Recent fire seasons have been longer, hotter, and among the deadliest and most destructive on record. The 260,000 residents of Marin receive fire protection and emergency response services from 19 separate cities, towns, fire districts, and the county, but there is no single agency responsible for coordinating wildfire prevention.
The threat of large destructive wildfires in Marin is real, and one of the most important lessons is that a fast-moving wildfire doesn't care about jurisdictional boundaries, but a coordinated, large-scale effort to improve prevention and safety can make a difference, can save lives and property.
In response to the need for coordinated action to reduce wildfire risk in Marin, local fire agencies and municipal departments have proposed creation of the new Jones-Powers Authority, the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. The new authority's mission would be to improve and oversee programs in early wildfire detection, improve alert and warning systems, resident evacuations, vegetation management, and fiber hazard reduction, defensible space property evaluation, educating the public about wildfire safety, and more.
This new fire prevention and mitigation program is designed to, in addition to, not in replacement of the current fire prevention efforts currently in place in our Marin communities. The program is designed to bring all of Marin neighborhoods up to a defensible space standard to minimize loss from large damaging wildfires, while also allowing flexibility to address local needs. For example, some communities have local fire issues related to the need for improved fire patrols, road widening, increasing the vegetation, removal along critical evacuation route.
Some local community issues that can be addressed, for one, is improving your primary and secondary evacuation routes from your neighborhood. Many communities within Marin only have one way in and one way out. How we improve that is by removing hazardous vegetation that's located along the roadside. A second issue to address would be improved defensible space inspection program. How that is involved is by allowing a coherent inspector to come into our community and to be able to consistently inspect everything property and give recommendations on how you can prepare your home to become more fire safe.
Currently, no dedicated source of funding exists for wildfire prevention and preparedness in Marin. Options for securing a dedicated funding source are being evaluated, including placing a local funding measure on the ballot in 2020 for voters to consider. It is estimated that approximately $20 million per year is needed to implement an effective coordinated wildfire prevention program.
We've been lucky to avoid major wildfire Marin campaigns, but luck is not a strategy. We need a good plan to make ourselves safer. Research and just plain common sense put out the need to have a coordinated county-wide wildfire prevention effort. It's been a long time coming, but I'm very excited to see all of this come together.
In the coming months, city, town, and local fire agencies will have the opportunity to join the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority and decision to join the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, and decisions will be made about securing dedicated funding for the authority's programs. To stay informed, please visit www.marinwildfire.org.
So, I wanted to make the council and public aware of two corrections that are being, that are distributed, or two items that are distributed that were not part of the packet. First, we just passed out to you, we put some copies in the back. We provided you a copy of the ordinance that the county saw in draft form, the county board of supervisors saw in draft form, that would implement the tax measure and put on the ballot. The map attached to that isn't correct, it's just printed wrong. So, we wanted you to see a correct map. You're not actually voting on that ordinance, you're just asking, considering whether to ask the county to put the measure on the ballot, but we wanted you to have a correct map so you saw what the operational boundaries actually look like. And the boundaries may be a topic of discussion tonight as you ask questions. Secondly, there are three amendments to the JPA that we're asking, should you vote tonight to join this JPA, that you do so noting these amendments and incorporating them into the document. So, we'll talk about the amendments, but we're asking that, that you consider them as part of the body of the text tonight. And I will address, address them shortly. I liked that video, wanted to start with it, not just because Ruben does a great job in the video, but he does, because Ruben always does a good job, but it serves to set a tone and a reminder about why we're having this conversation tonight. We're having this conversation tonight because we need to make Marin County safer. And beyond all else that may come up in tonight's discussion, I ask everybody to not lose sight that everyone who's involved is trying to make Marin the safest place possible. We're very fortunate in Marin that we have a number of fire jurisdictions that work very well together. I'm told that if we went way back in time, that maybe wasn't always the case, but it's definitely the case today, and it's a necessity. And a lot of folks may not realize that there's 19 different fire jurisdictions in Marin, which the video makes a point of reminding everybody. Now, those don't necessarily correlate to departments, because we are, for example, a fire jurisdiction in Larkspur, but we recently joined the Central Marin Fire Authority to create our department. We still are one of the 19 agencies because we retain our taxing authority for fire. And so, that's an important thing as we go through this process. If you look at the list of the 19 agencies, you might wonder why some of those agencies are on the list, because they retain the taxing authority for fire service. Even though they may not actually provide that service to the public, they may be directing their money to some other entity to provide the fire protection service. I've had a lot of folks sort of ask me about how that list got generated and why some communities are on it and some are not. Some, some communities are served by districts. The cities don't actually provide the fire, and that's why those cities aren't listed. Some, like us, are in a JPA, so we're still collecting the fire tax, and that's a important distinction as we go through this. That's why we have these particular partners. Our 19 fire agencies have been talking for years about strategies and techniques to make our communities safer. A lot of that talk culminated in 2016 with a really important document that I encourage folks to take a look at. It's on the firesafemarin.org website. It's referenced in your staff reports, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. That came out in 2016, and it really is the roadmap of the work that needs to get done to start to tackle the wildfire prevention problem. Then, 2017, the world really changed for all of us with the Sonoma-Napa fire. After that fire hit, the sense of urgency appropriately went way up. How do we get from having a document to getting things done on the ground? And then, in 2018, if that wasn't enough, we had the Paradise Fire to remind us of just how devastating it can be. An entire town essentially wiped out. Your staff at your direction, and by your staff, I mean you, all the elected leaders of Marin, called upon your staffs to figure this out and get us moving. And that happened in a lot of different ways. Some of the agencies are better off than others in terms of the revenue streams that they already have in place to deal with fire prevention. Others were struggling to figure out how they might generate the money to deal with fire prevention at this level, to deal with wildfire prevention. Some of the agencies raced out to the ballot and asked for more money so they could start to direct. The problem is, none of this was very well-coordinated. When you have 19 agencies that all need to participate, if you're truly going to make sure that things get done, you're only as strong as your weakest links. And if some agencies are out doing an excellent job of wildfire protection, and other agencies don't have the means to match that level of protection, or at least achieve the baseline, we have a problem. And so, we started the process of figuring out how we could do this collaboratively and collectively, and that process really began in earnest about a year ago. There's a lot of discussion occurring at the agency-staff level of how we might move to some sort of joint operation that will let us work collectively and collaboratively to achieve these goals. And tonight, as you may have questions about the documents you have in front of you, so that there's clarity on the point, I participated on the working groups. So, I've been involved from, basically, the start of 2019 till today, I've been involved in our drafting what you have in front of you. I'm not alone. It's a huge committee. A lot of work went into this by a lot of very smart people to get us to the point where we are today. One of the things we had to do is set a goal. When are we going to call the question of what we're going to do? That's a tough thing to ask. You have 19 agencies that all have their own timetables, they all have their own issues, they all have their own local issues. You also have the fact that when you're talking about tax measures, particularly tax measures that might be large, and we instinctively knew we were probably talking about a significant tax, you have to be cognizant of all the different ballots. The council knows this. You know, we've, when we did Measure B, we didn't just race out to the next ballot. We put some thought into what's the right ballot for us to be on, recognizing everything else that's gonna be out in front of the public. We also had jurisdictions who were ready to go to the ballot in 2019, and we had to ask them, "Would you wait? Because we think we'll be better together, we'll be stronger together." And so, we worked through all those issues, and we landed on, we should be on the March 2020 ballot. So, that drove our timeline that we needed to move on. And that's one of the reasons we're here bringing this question to you today, is that when you work back from that deadline of trying to be on the March 2020 ballot, the Board of Supervisors needs to act in November to do that. So, what the Board of Supervisors needs to know is, are there a sufficient number of agencies interested in moving this forward? And they need to know that by the end of October. And so, four agencies have already committed and passed, four of the smaller districts have already taken this. Tonight is sort of the beginning of the conversation among larger agencies in terms of having the actual action before you. Tonight, Larkspur's take, you are taking up the question. The Nevada Fire District is deliberating this, this evening, as is the Town of Fairfax. The Town of Corder Madera had a conversation about it last night. It wasn't on their agenda to take action, so it's a little bit different conversation that they had yesterday. I think it's really important that folks understand that the core issue is how do we meet what are called in this document, the core functions of this authority? And those core functions are sort of outlined for you in the staff report on page two. It talks about, we need to do wildfire detection evacuation systems, we need to do vegetation management and fire hazard reduction, we need to do public education, neighborhood wildfire preparedness, we need to do defensible space and home hardening, too. That, I want to come back to in a minute. But we needed to have a way of generating funds and then working collaboratively to manage those funds, and a joint powers authority, we felt, was the appropriate vehicle to do that. There also is a strong feeling among all the agencies that the public needed to have a defensible space program, a program that really talks the community about what we call hardening your home, making your home truly fire-safe, creating radius around your home that will help in the event that there's a wildfire. We felt that needed to be, as best as possible, done equally or in a similar fashion among all the agencies. We landed on the idea that we would do the evaluations collaboratively, and we would do the abatement process collaboratively. But we did acknowledge that every community is a little bit different, and some of their needs are a little bit different. So, we called out the category of defensible space and gave it its own designation in the way the JPA is structured, because we wanted to have a program that created some consistency in what we're telling the public and what we're administering, but also had some flexibility for local agencies to take over some of the program if they felt managing that program themselves, or parts of that program themselves, was more appropriate in their community. And so, we have what's called the core functions, which are identified in the document and for which 60% of the budget is proposed to be dedicated. Then, we have this hardening, defensible space program that's called out specially and given 20% of the initial allocation in the budget. But as I mentioned, not everybody's on the same level, and we need to get all the agencies to some level that we feel is a good base level. And so, part of that is making sure monies flow down to the local level. Monies flow down to Larkspur, they flow down to Corder Madera, they flow down to San Anselmo, and they get spent in those jurisdictions on the programs and projects that need to get done to move everybody along to safe, to safer. And so, we created a third category, which is designated for these local programs, for flowing the money back into these local programs. That's the other 20% that you see designated in the JPA. Now, we all know, we need flexibility because needs change over time, and so, there's a loop in the JPA to keep looking at these pro, these allocation designations every five years. And that's important, too, because needs will change as we address some things and we see the need to move toward other needs. So, there's been a lot of thought put into that structure. There's been a lot of thought put into the governance of the agency. And in fact, when Chief Shirts made his presentation to you, we were actually talking about a different governance structure than the one that's in the document. After we sort of unveiled our initial thought, which was to try to have the governance structure be done consistent with the operational zones, which we'll talk about a little bit more when we get into the operation program. The county, for fire purposes, is essentially divided into five operational zones, and we thought a governance structure consistent with that might make a lot of sense. But as we talked it through more and more with all the member agencies, we realized we need to make sure there's a forum for all 19 voices to be heard. But we also need to make sure there's a forum that recognizes that the challenges faced by some of the agencies are proportionately larger than they are for other agencies. And so, we created a governance structure that tries to capture both of those needs. Everyone's at the table, but there are times when the votes will be weighted based on the revenue that was generated by the member agencies. And that creates an opportunity for everybody to have a say, but it doesn't create a situation or scenario where any particular agency can, can really dominate and prevent progress. So, that's another key point that we worked out, and we took a lot of input throughout that particular discussion from folks in the different agencies who had concerns with how this would work out. You'll notice that that's in the staff reports, identified on page two. The other thing that we had changed since we last sort of talked to you on that higher level is we, we've written up what the Citizen Oversight Committee would look like and what its authorities would be, and those are provided, and we've identified which stakeholder entities, which categories should be on that committee. And then, like the governing board, the, the JPA's proposed to have two bodies that sort of run it. One's the board, which is the elected officials. The other is an operational committee of managers and chiefs that really will get into the minutia of the operations and make recommendations up to the board. And it was felt that just as we needed to have 19 voices at the table to truly feel we're capturing everything at the board level for policy and budget discussion, the operational committee similarly now reflects the need to have and desire to have all 19 voices have an opportunity to sit at the table. Those are the significant changes since you heard from Chief Shirts. The other thing is, we never come to you, and Larkspur and none of our partner agencies that are discussing this come to their respective boards with something as significant as a ballot measure, asking for money, until we've done a poll and found out what the community has to say. Polling's a tricky business. I will tell you, I've commissioned at least a dozen polls in my career, and my intuition, most of the time, is wrong, because I project my own personal thoughts on what I think the outcome of the poll ought to be and what's logical to me onto the poll. So, I always have to remind myself that you hire professional pollsters because this is what they do for a living. They ask questions of the community, and they interpret the results, and they make a recommendation to you of what you ought to put in front of the voters. And what I do know, in this particular case, they used Godbe Research to do this particular poll. Larkspur has used Godbe in the past, we've used other firms in the past, but what I can tell you is, they're usually pretty darn accurate at the end of the day. And my, that's why I'm often surprised, my intuition is not always correct, my personal view is not always line up with what the results of the poll are, but when we go out to the ballot, in fact, when they're wrong, they're often wrong because they were too conservative and the support's higher than what they projected it would be. The ballot language before you reflects their analysis of the questions they asked out into the community. It reflects what they believe is, captures what will be supported by the voters, and that's why it's presented as it is. Some of the council members have, have the benefit of having attended a recent countywide meeting of the Marin Council Members, Mayors and Council Members Association, which one of our former council members, who recently participated on the grand jury, Ron Arless, made a statement that I like a lot. He said, "This JPA isn't perfect, but I support it." I'm gonna take that a step further. I've, I've written JPAs, I helped write this document. I've worked on charters in different communities, I've worked on county ordinances, city ordinances. I've never seen anything that's perfect. There's, I think, a narrative I've been hearing in the last several days that things are written into stone. Nothing's written in stone. This city belongs to quite a few JPAs, and in my time here, we've amended almost all of them. So, it's important that you keep in mind that what you, if you join this JPA, it doesn't mean it can't be changed later on. And in fact, the provisions in here are such that the board will be able to have that dialogue. So, I just want to throw that out there, because I've been sort of getting a lot of questions from folks that, once you make this decision, nothing can ever move. It can't. It can be changed, and it can be amended. So, I offer that as something for the council to consider. And a little bit, I'm gonna turn over to Chief Shirts to talk a bit about operational zones and how some of the prioritization of work is anticipated, but, and then it'll come back to me, and I'll wrap up, and we'll make ourselves open to questions, if that's all right with the council. council.
All right. Chief Schertz, let's think.
So Dan, there's some questions people have for you. Do you mind if we interrupt and ask the questions? Okay.
So with the new governance structure as outlined in the current form of this JPA and the 19 member agencies having equal voting capacity, could you further elaborate on what you meant by the percentage of the tax captured by each individual agency? Then, that's unclear to me, how that will work.
Let me find the page while we're talking. If you look...
And I'm asking that in the context of a smaller agency. We're a smaller city compared to a San Rafael and Nevado, who could capture a lot more taxing capacity.
So if you could turn to the JPA document and you look in section four, paragraph F, which happens to be on page four of the JPA document.
Under voting.
Under voting.
Okay.
It's proposed that a lot of the decisions, key decisions for the JPA are going to be made where 50% of the members have to agree, but they also have to be 50% of the members who represent 50% of the revenue coming in. So it kind of prevents both the larger agencies from, two or three of them ganging up on the rest of the group, which we heard was a fear.
Yeah.
Chokingly, I've not seen those particular agencies ever able to do that because they don't agree all that much on stuff that none of us are, if we're actually fighting about something. But then secondly, it doesn't allow several smaller agencies to stop and drive policy when all of the heavier populated areas might drive it in a particularly different way.
Okay, that's a little clearer. That's on page four, section F.
Yeah.
Section four, F, all right. That is a little concerning now that it's better explained that smaller agencies like ours, Central Marin Fire, which is only 20,000 residents, is going to have a smaller tax revenue capture.
So let's be clear. Actually, sorry, do you want to correct?
I was just going to, I might be able to give you like a hypothetical that might make this more clear, too. So what the design of this is intended to do is encourage and almost insist upon consensus. So you could have, some of the concerns from the smaller agencies were that, you know, the big three, so to speak, Nevado, San Rafael, the county, could ram their ideas through with little to be done about it. But the way this has developed, if you have 19 representatives at the meeting, you would still need to get 10 or more to vote in the affirmative for anything. Now, another scenario could be that you have 10 agencies that are very interested in a particular notion, but they represent such a small amount of the population that that vote wouldn't necessarily certainly carry until they got assistance from other representatives that represented more population to get that up above 50% of the population served.
But ultimately, the decisions as to what projects will be funded are the voting things based on the CWPP and the other information that's already been collected and will continue to be collected. It's not going to be based on a popularity contest, in other words.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, those are the guiding documents that will inform all of these decisions. But there will be moments when priorities are going to be debated.
Yeah, I also wanted to address one thing because the chief, I keep having to correct myself, too. It's easy to say the county's a big agency. They are not.
Right.
In the world of fire, they're a very tiny agency. We actually have a bigger vote proportionally than the county of Marin. Because a lot of unincorporated Marin is served by fire districts. And those fire districts will have the vote at the table, not the county. So think of Kentfield Fire. That agency will be at the table and will be voting for Kentfield. It will not be the county. So the big agency, the third big agency in fire is Southern Marin. It's not the county. That's the big agency.
The county represents, I think, 7%.
And that's only because of the CSAs and all the other. We'll get in the weeds quick.
Larkspur and Corder Medera together represent 9%.
So just to piggyback on Catherine's question, so we have a governing board that has 19 members, and then we have a Citizen Oversight Committee along with an Operations Committee. Is that correct?
And a Technical Advisory Committee.
And a technical.
Yes.
So all those committees have a say on which direction to go?
The Technical Advisory Committee is also comprised of one member from each represented agency, but it will also be including land management agencies, perhaps PG&E, interested stakeholders. But this is not a, they don't have votes. And these are technical experts that will be advising the Operations Committee on the formulation of a work plan. And then the Operations Committee, which is comprised of fire chiefs and town and city managers, will present a work plan to the Board of Directors, who are all elected officials.
The 19 members, okay.
To approve a budget and a work plan.
Great, all right. Thank you. Kevin?
I'll hold off on my questions. Thanks.
Okay, great. Dan?
I know you're going to get to these amendments. I just wanted to clarify, are these amendments proposed by the JPA for the JPA or are these amendments proposed by Larkspur, representing Larkspur's interests?
Okay, so...
I gather it's the former.
No, it's neither of those. You can have a drafting committee and you can work for months to produce a document. I think it's human nature that sometimes folks are more engaged than other folks. Sometimes folks are more clear than other folks about what has to be in the document to work. And I would say in the last two weeks, there's been a lot of, oh, this is going out, we need to tweak, we need to amend. Most of that got captured in the document before it could go to the Board of Supervisors. These three items reflect outstanding items that the managers have been working in the background, the managers of all these different 19 agencies have been talking about to try to resolve some of the outstanding questions that we hadn't fully understood weren't resolved when we sent the item to the Board of Supervisors.
So these reflect current consensus?
These are current consensus that they belong in the draft. You're actually the first, you and the other two boards that are hearing this tonight are the first to see them in consideration of incorporating them into the document.
Thank you, very helpful.
Are there a copy of those for the public? Because I think some people were looking.
There were some in the back table, yeah. We can make more.
Okay, well, sorry for the interruption.
I can address those now. I was going to wait after the chief's done, but I can...
Why don't we go with the chief, like you recommended, Dan?
All right.
Chief, you're on.
Well, I came a few weeks ago and gave you the presentation about how this was anticipated to roll out. And as city manager indicated, there have been some adjustments, which, most of which we've discussed and we'll pick up the others in a moment. But operationally, the concept behind this is to use those three guiding documents that inspired this entire movement, the Lessons Learned Document, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and the Grand Jury Report. And the document that will guide most of the vegetation management issues would be the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And the other two documents made many additional recommendations about the other categories, such as evacuation planning and grants, et cetera. I don't have anything further to add, other than how the presentation that I gave you last time, I'd certainly be willing to answer any questions about it, but the operational aspects have not really been significantly adjusted since we last spoke.
Any questions? No? Okay.
In general, or is that the end of the staff?
No, Dan's going to continue on with the amendments. Okay.
So you have the, that's a segue into the three amendments because the first two really reflect trying to make sure that funds and operational zones are lined up to work well together in terms of getting these services to where they need to be. The first amendment that we're putting forth is, we sort of realized that in the startup year, there's the potential, for a while, a lot of things are getting ramped up for money to sit and not be out there being put to good use. And so we wanted to make sure there was a provision to let that money not sit, but rather flow back into the operational zones for the local agencies to put to use. So that first amendment is intended to do that. The second amendment was designed when we realized you sort of have the challenge that not every year will it make sense for all the money to be spread equally among five zones. You might have a year where there's a particular project that the Operational Committee and the Technical Advisory Committee have highlighted and said, it needs to get done and we need to shift some money around to get that done. So we didn't want ambiguity about the ability of the agency to do that, but we also want to make sure that if we do that, that we acknowledge that we're going to do a correction, we're going to do a true-up to make sure that, over time, we're spending money equitably across the five zones. So this language is intended to put some clarification to that point. So you could imagine there might be a year where the Nevado, the zone in the north, might have a big project we all agree needs to get done. Then they may not have a project done the next year as we balance out the system. And we wanted that cycle to have some depth to it, so it's looked at over five years to give us a chance to strategize. So that was a key point that we felt this language captured that had always been our intent, that we felt was better to have in writing. And then lastly, one of the provisions that, you know, we have in Measure B, and a lot of folks put into measures, is how are we going to have an opportunity for the public to discuss if the tax should be rescinded or modified? There's actually two avenues. There's the one in this amendment, which is to ensure there'd be a public hearing at the Board of Supervisors every 10 years. There's also the fact that the tax can actually be adjusted by the JPA board, so if the need changes, they can actually diminish the tax appropriately. Now, I personally will tell you, it's going to be many years and I'll probably be long gone before the need goes away, if it ever does. That's the new reality, the new normal.
No, you're stuck.
But, you know, we did want to make sure there was a proper forum for folks to voice concern. So this added provision would say that every 10 years, the board will hold a public hearing and will hear from the public about whether or not there should be modifications. So those are the three amendments that we'd ask that you incorporate. The action before you tonight for consideration is to adopt the resolution that would authorize me to execute the joint powers agreement with, once that time comes, as all the agencies take their vote. It's also requesting the Board of Supervisors put a measure on the ballot and that that measure would include your jurisdictional boundary of Larkspur as part of the ballot measure. So those are your decisions this evening. What I would tell you at this point is, if you have concerns about the JPA language, my advice would be that we try to capture those in a list that we can use to discuss as the JPA moves forward. If you have concerns about the ballot language, I'm happy to capture those, or concerns about the measure, so that we can convey those to the Board of Supervisors when they, before they hold their hearing on it in November. So with that, I turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Hey, Dan, you gave a great example about the five operational zones, the funding levels out, San Isamo, if they burnt down. Would you, I just thought that really hit home today.
Well, so the mayor and I had a chance to sit down and chat about this item a little bit earlier today. And I know a lot of folks say, well, what's in it for Larkspur? How am I sure Larkspur gets its fair share? And I have two answers to that. One is, there's a lot of provisions in here that's going to flow money proportionally back to Larkspur. But I also want folks to remember the collective good. It's no good to Larkspur if there's a wildfire and Fairfax and San Isamo burn down, even if we're still standing when it's done. One is, our environment's been heavily destroyed by a massive urban fire. And secondly, I guarantee that the value of homes in our community and the impact to our community will be very negative for many years if that scenario plays out. So we're in an operational zone, and it might be that money's flowing to Larkspur to prevent a fire from ever entering any of our urban areas. And that, I see that as having tremendous value to us, too. I think this document does a great job of balancing the needs of the Ross Valley, which is one of the operational zones, and the needs of Larkspur, and making sure that both get addressed.
Great, thank you. Councilmembers, any questions?
I have, okay. Do you mind, no, go ahead.
Only to amplify what you just said, I believe it might be as long as 10 years ago when we hosted a Mayors and Council Members Meeting, we had a simulation at the dinner of what, how long it would take a wildfire if it started south of Corder Medera to find it to burn all the way through north to and into past San Rafael. It was 45 minutes under intense conditions. So that kind of sets the picture for you.
I would actually encourage folks, if you go to Fire Safe Marin's website, you can actually see some of that modeling. And you can see how quickly fires could move through.
So that 45 minutes is worth us acting tonight.
And that is what the CWPP was based on, was a lot of very scientific modeling, using LiDAR and fuel modeling and burning index, et cetera.
Dan?
So we're kind of late to the party, but better showing up than not coming at all.
But you're one of the first to take this up. So if we're all collectively late to the party, we could be one of the first to collectively stand up.
Great, thanks, Dan. Catherine, do you have some questions?
I have a few process questions. Did everybody who in the audience wanted to see these amendments? You got enough copies of them? So I didn't do...
We have some mixed nods and shakes.
Oh, I think they put an extra pile, because I know, Mimi, you were looking for some, so I was just make sure. In doing sort of my due diligence for prepare tonight, I watched the Corder Medera Council Meeting section about this last night. And I actually went on their website and downloaded some of their documents and things that they have, just to learn a little bit more. And there was two amendments sort of proposed that are very similar to these two, our first two that are proposed on this, very similar language. So my question is, the Board of Supervisors passed the existing JPA language at their September 24th meeting. If the cities and towns may now suggest some amendments to that, where are, how does that then, how do those amendments then become brought up to public hearing and brought up to be reexamined by the Board of Supervisors? Or do they do that and we just make those changes later to the JPA? And what's the strategy as to whether it's better to do it before or after?
So what Corder Medera circulated was not a document that had been agreed upon by all the parties concerned at the staff level. So I want to be upfront about that. This document has been the product of intense work over the last several days.
Okay.
And I was told, as of 3:30 today, has the endorsement of everyone, including the county staff, that the county staff will present this as part of an amended JPA when they take up the measure. The four agencies that already passed it will take it up before the end of October or first thing in November before the counties meeting and incorporate them into the language. So the goal now is that everybody will agree to the document with these three changes added to it. What you saw on that video... What you saw on that video at Cordera Madera was a draft that was part of getting to this document.
Okay, that makes it more clear.
Yeah.
All right. So, because I recognize that a lot of these three amendments have recognized some of the concerns that we've heard in public hearing, the Board of Supervisors have heard in public hearing, about oversight and having a citizens' advisory committee and various things like that. Do we, does the manager's working group of this feel that these are the main three amendments? Or are they considering other ones at this point?
These are the last three amendments before everybody needs a vote.
Okay.
And then, there can be other amendments later.
As we move a JPA along?
Yes. You could make additions. The new board can meet and amend the JPA if they want to, once it's constituted. And in fact, I feel pretty confident by mid to late November, there may be an operational committee meeting, because we have a lot to talk about and make sure we're translating all these documents that we have into information for the voters to obtain, digest, and make their decisions about.
Okay, that's clear, because it wasn't, it was, the documents that came off of a different website were unclear and not as succinct as these here, so.
I acknowledge and thank quite, I can't even name them all, the people, I can just tell you, but a lot of people on a lot of phone calls all day long to get this document ready.
Dan?
Just one other comment to kind of put things in perspective. The 13 towns and cities are involved in over 35 JPAs, not unlike this one. We do this because we can't all take on the service loads individually. So this is part of a very, we're grateful for this in Marin, because we work so well together already on so many different things. It's tough, but just to get to Catherine's question earlier, it's very common for all of these JPAs to, every annually or every five years or regularly amend the JPAs. It's part of the process. It's why it's great that we work together.
Yep, part of the shared services, absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any else? Larry?
As a follow-on comment to that, the Marin County Council of Mayor's and council members also has a JPA Oversight Committee. So if, you know, the public or the elected's ever felt that additional scrutiny need to be put upon this JPA specifically, that they can bring it back to the MCCMC and have that added to the list of JPAs for oversight.
Great, thanks, Larry. So I have a question about the whole process. If we can go back to the defensible space and home hardening evaluations? So someone comes out, and we'll use the Medrone Canyon as an example, comes to a home and says, "We need to chop down these, you know, six trees." And so, is that the homeowners?
You know what'd be great? The person who does that right now, sitting over there, and I'm going to put him on the spot and make him grab the mic. He'll tell you what he does.
Come, answer that question.
Let's talk about that.
So that's been some concerns of neighbors. Who, so someone comes and evaluates, and is it a recommendation or is it mandatory? And who pays for that? How does it continue?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, thank you. Yeah, during our home assessments, we give recommendations of what needs to get hap, or what needs to happen. Right now, we are not mandating homeowners to remove mature, live, healthy trees. The only time where we would require a homeowner to remove a tree is if it died. So we're looking for, what we're looking for is anything that's dead, dying, or drying that could potentially be viewed as kindling. So that's where these home hardening assessments come. They're actually do a one-on-one, 20 to 30-minute assessment with the homeowner and almost do a catered kind of assessment, because we realize every parcel within our community is different, based on size, home, and the type of vegetation that's around it. So that's where we kind of go around and make the individual recommendations of exactly what needs to get done. At the end of the day, if a tree does need to get removed or vegetation does need to come out, then it becomes back on the homeowner's responsibility.
Okay, you answered it, thank you.
And if I could just add, try to imagine Ruben's workload. And part of the problem for the Central Marin Fire Authority is, we can't clone Ruben and have 10 of him running around, so we can get all this work done. One of the great things about this program is to create a resource, a group of folks that we can tap to help get this work done and do these visits to the property. And I do want to also clarify, Ruben is describing what Central Marin does. Other jurisdictions approach it a little differently. Everybody has their own touch. You've seen some recent media coverage about Mill Valley, and their goal is to be somewhere else right now. And someday, we may all have to be there. The state's starting to signal that it may pass some regulations about this. But I can only assure you, this language was crafted to make sure we could continue to do it the Central Marin way. Mill Valley can continue to do it the Mill Valley way. San Rafael can do it the San Rafael way. But we leverage the centralized resource to get the key assessment work done.
Well, Ruben, thanks for what you do.
Can I just do a little plug for Fire Safe Marin's home hardening workshop? You know the date, November 15th, I think? Do you know that one? They're having a big symposium for the community on how to do home hardening, and you can look it up on the Fire Safe Marin website.
Great, thank you very much. Any other council members have any questions? Kevin?
Yeah, just a couple things. First, I want to thank our city manager for all the hard work that you have put into this process for months and months and months, at least a year, maybe even more, not sure. And I think it's terrific, and I think it reflects a recognition by our city staff, as well as the city staff and county staff throughout Marin County about the urgency of this issue and the importance of dealing with it in a decisive and effective way. And so I just want to congratulate you for the work that you've put into it, and I appreciate it very much. I see there's kind of two separate sets of issues here that require some public discussion. We've already started on that a little bit so far. One has to do with the use of a JPA in order to accomplish the goals that we all agree need to be accomplished in terms of protecting public health and safety. The other have to do with the tax aspects of it and the parameters that are wrapped around that, and I want to kind of defer a discussion, I hope we can defer a discussion on that until after we hear from the public, because I know there are members of the public that are here specifically to talk about that. But on the, kind of the fundamental issue of the use of a JPA and recognizing council members, homers, comments about, we've got lots of JPAs in Marin County, and I'm very pleased to be representing this community on what I think is probably the most successful of those JPAs, which is MCE Clean Energy. Noting in that regard, though, that MCE Clean Energy is also a creature of state law. It's not just a JPA, but it was essentially authorized by an act of the state legislature to pursue statewide policies to promote community choice aggregation. So we've done that. So we have that kind of overlay in that context from the state legislature. We don't really have that in this case. So I guess my question really is, what consideration was given during the process leading up to the proposal to have a JPA to alternatives in terms of organization and structures to manage our ability to respond to this very real threat to the community? And whether legislative options were considered as part of that process? That's a question.
Early on in the discussions, I'd say there were looks at whether an actual district of some kind made sense. But generally, we kept gravitating back to the problem that we have 19 entities collecting fire taxes now. We have 19 agencies with jurisdictional authority over fire prevention. And how do we ensure they maintain local control and local preferences while also bringing them onboard the team to make sure everybody's coordinating, collaborating together? For your staff, the natural decision was to promote a JPA, because that purpose of that vehicle is to contractually bind yourselves together for that very purpose, to act as one. And so for us, that made sense, and I'd say we gravitated to it rather quickly. I don't remember there being discussions about pursuing legislation. I probably would have been against that if it had come up, because I don't, I feel a sense of urgency and a need to have local nimbleness that might be constrained. It would take a while to get legislation passed, because then you're talking about the legislature trying to figure out, one, do they want to do this? Two, are they setting a precedent that needs to be thought about statewide? And it just, we would not have been able to get to where we are today in the amount of time we went, so.
And I appreciate those, and those are all legitimate observations, and I appreciate that. Reflecting again on the, on the community choice issue, the state did take another path, and it's been successful. One question that I have that kind of weaves into this issue is, what are other counties, because this is not just an issue that faces Marin, it's an issue that faces Sonoma, faces Napa, all of the, all of the counties surrounding the bay, extending throughout the state. For that reason, a legislative approach actually makes, to me, some greater sense, recognizing that that's a time-consuming process in some cases, and that that's counter to what we're trying to accomplish, which is to really be responding to the needs of our, of our community. But my question in that little discussion is, what are other counties doing in terms of developing structures to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish here with this JPA?
Well, I would say, one example of legislative approach that has not worked well in this type of arena was the SRA fee that ended up, folks in this area felt like we did not get what we bargained for. It doesn't affect people in the cities, but those in the unincorporated areas and that were subject to that. That's just an example of where that may have not been the best approach.
Can you tell people what SRA is?
State Responsibility Area. So that was just, that was like a statewide legislative approach to try and handle something that...
Yeah, so maybe I'll chime in with a few points. You can't readily compare any county in the state of California in the way regional fire protection's done. I've worked in all three of the North Bay's counties, I guess four if we count Solano. But I'll tell you, in Napa County, the county contracts with CAL FIRE, and CAL FIRE is a major player in the strategies and thought process of how Napa's regional fire approach is done. In Sonoma, like us, there's quite a few districts, and there's quite a bit of effort to coordinate between the districts. There's fewer, actually, I think, joint power authority arrangements, although they're now starting to do that, to grow some of their agencies to deal with economies of scale. You go to some of the other counties in the state that are wrestling with fire issues, and there's massive, either fire JPAs or fire districts that cover large portions of the county. It would be difficult, I think, actually, for the legislature to do a one-size-fits-all approach to something like this. I also would submit that the joint powers authority arrangements tried and true for Marin and works, has worked really well for us. And so, I think another reason we gravitated to it is, we have a track record of forming and managing joint powers authorities. And I guess I'd say, as one of the architects of the document, it reflects everything we do and don't like about all those JPAs. It's not by accident that there are two lower committees and then a top elected officials' committee. We've seen which JPAs work well and don't work well, and the ones that have those types of committee structures are functioning much better than the ones that don't. And so, we worked really hard to make sure that decision-making would make sense in this organization, and it reflects, you know, the collective decades of experience among the management level of Marin, running these types of organizations and working for these types of organizations. And I personally am very comfortable and confident we've picked the appropriate vehicle.
Great.
And I have heard that other counties in the Bay Area region are looking at something similar and watching us very closely, because we're just, we're out front with this.
That's great, we're the leaders.
And I just, I just want to appreciate that last comment, because we are up front in taking this approach, as far as I can tell. I don't know that there's a precedent for what we're proposing to do here in the state. So this is, to some extent, an experiment, and I think that folks need to understand that aspect of it as we go through, go through this discussion. And I just want to make clear, anything that I say here is not intended to question in any way the importance of this issue and the need for a robust response to dealing with it, and encouragement for all of our agencies within the county of Marin to participate in getting to a solution here. It's important, though, that I think the public understand the nature of the enterprise that we're proposing to embark upon here, that it is, to some extent, untested and unprecedented. And as we go through that decision-making process, that we fully understand what the alternatives may be, and the extent to which those alternatives may have been considered as this has been developed. I mean, I had an interesting conversation with our city attorney right before this, where we talked a little bit about, you know, what role the county could or could not play, and that was educational to me, because I didn't fully understand maybe some of the limitations on what county authority independently might be. So that was useful. Unfortunately, that's just something I learned tonight, which also kind of brings me to a more generalized concern, which I think we might take up when we get into more of a discussion on the tax aspects of things, is, you know, how quickly this has proceeded. Recognizing a lot of hard work has been gone on, has been undertaken at the staff level for a long, long period of time, but there is a little bit of a sense, I think, within our community, that getting to a decision here is a bit rushed. That's it.
Great, thanks, Kevin. Dan?
I want to emphasize Kevin's comment earlier about our gratitude for all your work that you've put into this. Your leadership, I know, is appreciated around the county. Larkspur's had some pretty strong, relevant experience in the last several election cycles around funding public infrastructure projects, which I would consider this to be in that discussion, as well as taking advantage of the general trust that the community has and the ability of elected officials in Larkspur and Marin to focus on public safety when we have to. And the timing for this is very, very important. So I think we're all able to compartmentalize those things we agree on, those things we don't agree on, those things that have high priority versus those things that we can set aside and work out as we move forward in that trusting conversation. So I really don't take for granted the good fortune that we have here in the county to be able to solve these things in a, in a reasonable conversation without irrelevant issues coming into it. And Kevin, I respect your comments, and I know that we'll work through those things.
Great.
I look forward to the public comment.
Great. Anyone else? So let's do that, let's go to the public comment. So when you come up to the podium, please state your name and address and speak your mind. We're here to listen. Hi, Peter.
Hi. My name is Peter Mazanis. My wife and I have lived in the Medrone Canyon for 45 years. I'm the coordinator of the Medrone Canyon Neighborhood Response Group. I also sit on the Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Council, the Central Marin NRG Advisory Council, and the CERT Steering Committee. Council, and the CERT Steering Committee. I'm here to speak tonight on behalf of our 375 homes, supporting the goal of the JPA and hoping that it works forward. We're a vulnerable group, we know it. We step out and act accordingly, as I'd like to highlight. We are the first area in community in Marin, in Larkspur, excuse me, to become a firewise community. This was done over a period of several months, coordinating with Ruben and with Todd Lando, doing hardening assessments, doing assessments of clear space around homes. We also recently received a $66,000 grant from CAL FIRE to frankly turn the money over to Ruben and to Todd, most of it anyway, to develop a 200-foot-wide shaded fuel break from the top of Wilson Way to the top of Onyx. Some of the rest of that money will be used in the spring and fall of next year for two CAL FIRE but Madrone Canyon-paid chipper days, and we've invited Baltimore Park to join us and enjoy the benefits of that. Not sure that's quite proper, but we're doing it anyway. You know, I think one of the greatest traditions that we have in Larkspur going back a long time is our fire department. And I think anything that we can do to support them, and I think that's where the goal of the JPA is important, we need to get involved in. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Thanks for your support. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mayor Morrison and town councilors. I want to remind you, I'm wearing two hats tonight. First off, Doug Kelly from San Samo. And I'm pleased to serve on the single most successful JPA in the county, along with Council Member Hillmar, the Central Marin Sanitation Association. I also serve on...
Wait, wait a minute. Hold on.
The second most important and successful JPA, along with your town manager and fire chief, the Marin Emergency Radio Authority. I have in the past served on the Central Marin Police Authority and the Ross Valley Fire Department. And I wanted to say, my commitment to safety in this community is important to me. I've worked hard on it, and I take it seriously. Let me take you back in time a little bit, if you will, and you'll, you'll get this point in just a minute. When I served on the San Samo Town Council, we had the social host ordinance come in front of us, and I couldn't sign. I could not sign on that. And that's because there were some details in the verbiage that I didn't think were accurate. And I was told by then Central Marin Police Chief Todd Cusmano, "Well, we weren't planning on really enforcing that," but I insisted that it be written correctly. The challenge there was that this council had already passed it, and Corte Madera had already passed it, so it was challenging. I prevailed, and we rewrote it, and this council was kind enough to revote and do it again. Corte Madera was kind enough to revote and do it again. My message tonight is, please, not so fast. And let me tell you why. I'm concerned about the second whereas, and I'm concerned that the second whereas is a lawsuit problem. Whereas intensifying climate change and extensive fuel buildup are contributing to the increased threat of wildfire throughout Marin County, and to the extent possible it should be addressed through ecologically sound practices that minimize release of greenhouse gases and protect the biodiversity and resilience of Marin landscapes. We, we need to, in my opinion, to change this and to tweak this. This needs to be a fire prevention program, not allowing other interests to hijack this plan. What if we needed to have a controlled burn? What if the fire chiefs said, "That's the best plan"? Have we got a lawsuit? What if the fire chief said, "We need to put a bulldozer up there and take out 20 feet wide"? What if they say that? Is that in the best interest, according to number two? I don't think so. I'm really concerned about how that's written. We're just getting into this JPA, which you can't get out of, and I don't want it written in a way that it's going to get hijacked and in a way that we're going to worry about things besides fire safety. I take fire safety very seriously. By the way, I want to be very clear, as a member of the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers, we have worked with Jason Weber and Matthew Heimel. We've met them a number of times. They have been absolutely fantastic. They've worked with us very well, very positively. I'm really pleased about that. I'm really concerned about this, and as a member of COST, and as a person who served on many important JPAs, whether the most important or the second most, I take safety seriously. Let's get this right.
Great. Thanks, Doug. Chief or Dan, do you want to respond to that?
So the second whereas reflects a desire among Marin's environmental community to at least acknowledge the environmental impact that some fire activity has. I actually personally worked on making sure that this is not a binding clause, so it's not, a county council agrees with me that as construed, this says we should have this as a goal, but it's not binding on us. I don't think we can get sued for this whereas clause.
Dan?
Is there a way to verify that some of the more aggressive fire protection activities that were identified in the commenter's comments can be included in your meaning without having to just rely on faith?
I mean, I think that's going to be open to interpretation.
Well, how can we hear back that we, in fact, can take these actions without having to worry about?
I, I think that, I understood what Dan said as, and the county council had interpreted this as not necessarily binding.
So control burns and cutting fire breaks are activities that can be construed to be included in the meaning of this action?
This language is intended to remind the JPA board that they should think about this, but it doesn't in any way bind them to make decisions where they prioritize environmental impact over public safety. The, it in no way provides any legal standing for somebody to challenge the activities of the JPA as somehow violating this clause.
Thank you.
Okay, so whoever would like to come up and speak, could we get, stand in line just so we can see how many people would like to make a statement? Appreciate it. Thank you. Stretch the legs. Hi, James.
Hi, James Holmes. I have a question, and then based on the answer, I might have a couple of comments. Question: Would this JPA have a, a separate compensated and pensioned management and staff, or would the management and staff be provided by the existing fire staff of the JPA members? Could, could I have that question answered?
Do you want to do it question by question, or do you want...
I think, I think we can, Dan. Yeah, sure.
Okay, so, yes, yes, maybe. So the way it's set up, the board decides later on if there should be employees of the joint powers authority. I think you'll see there's a provision and expectation, there'll be some sort of general manager to make sure the general administrator, administration is done. By design, there is no mention of pensions or anything in here that says that this agency is part of any pension program. That means that if this agency's board were to decide that its employment compensation should include a pension, they would have to now follow the path dictated by a combination of state laws to reach that. They'd have to apply to a pension program. They'd have to get accepted by that pension program. They'd have to go through an AB 1912 process to identify how the liabilities would be taken care of for that pension program. So there'd be numerous opportunities for the public to question why the agency was doing that. That was by design because it's generally the intent that there won't be pensions offered as compensation within this agency, and we wanted to make sure that for that to happen, there'd have to be several public hearings.
Okay.
Well, there is indeed a broad hiring and personnel clause. I, I do need, I agree, we need more coordination. I'm not sure we need more new coordinators with salaries and potentially pensions. More broadly, I'm concerned that a multi-jurisdictional JPA could essentially become a fire prevention version of A-BAG or Metropolitan Transportation Authority, a staff-driven entity with some autocratic tendencies and limited accountability and citizen recourse. One specific problem I see right off the bat is that the governing board need only meet twice a year. I don't think that's the best form of governance, and I think it should, for best oversight, it should be at least quarterly and possibly every three months. And another point with regard to individual recourse is, particular concern, is the potential burden and overreach of residential inspections. This JPA is truly unique, and this proposed tax is truly unique among the four that will be on the ballot, and that it can bring an inspector to the door. And that can be a scary proposition if you don't have any idea at all what the inspector might do. And as we know, there's a wide variety of approaches with regard to what should be done. We have Larkspur's approach. We also have a very different approach in Mill Valley. And right now, we don't know which one will be adopted here, and that is a source of considerable consternation. So I believe that there needs to be more clarity regarding both administration and enforcement, and with regard to if Larkspur is going to opt out of the enforcement aspects, then I think that should be addressed by this council as a part of its program.
Thanks for your comments, James.
Do you want any additional comment, or do you...
I, don't you, do you want me to chew weight, Dan?
That's up to you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, go ahead. Address, please.
Okay, so one of the comments from the speaker was that, and he's correct, the JPA board can hire staff. Remember, though, that to reach that point, two lower committees, one of which will be heavily constituted by your experts in fire, will have had to say that's the right thing to do. Nineteen of them have to, some grouping of nineteen of them need to get together and tell the higher board that's the right thing to do. So there will be an opportunity for the public to weigh in if the agency decides to do that. The agency also could contract with member agencies, which is provided by law that, that member agencies can provide services on behalf of a joint powers authority. The comment about A-BAG or MTC, this is a board of nineteen elected officials of Marin. So you have to all decide if that's the same thing as, as larger regional agencies. And then the document is carefully crafted to make sure that the use of inspections is left to the local jurisdiction in terms of what will happen. The inspections will be centralized, but each local jurisdiction will be able to adopt the rules that say what is going to be done with those inspections. But as you heard your fire marshal say, he's already coming to the door. Now, right now, he's doing it because he's invited. The day's coming where we're probably going to get ordered by the state to start to do this. The state's already signaling they're implementing it in its own lands, and I don't think it's very far behind, but we'll be having a discussion about, we have to do it, so.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Hi.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Mullin. I live in Palm Hill on Bayview. I have one question and one comment. The question I have is, I looked at the fire map as it's on the Larkspur website, and I noted that Larkspur, Corte Madera, Kenfield, a lot of these areas are in the very, very high-risk areas. Is there a provision in the JPA to address the high-risk areas before lower-risk areas are going to be addressed? That was one question. The second was with respect to the residential inspections. I took a look around my house. I border Corte Madera. Property line is in my backyard. So I cannot create defensible space. There's, it's just not possible. The 100-foot recommendation that is in the literature isn't possible, probably not only for my property, but for the majority of properties in a defense, in a densely populated area. So my concern is that, and that's why I really support the JPA idea, and thank you very much for all your work in it, is because I can maybe work within Larkspur, but a fire that starts in Corte Madera and progresses through Corte Madera to my property, I have no control over it. So I'm hoping that the JPA is going to address individual homeowner responsibilities through inspection and enforcement, because inspection without enforcement is meaningless, in my view. And we have to have a way to make sure that our high-density population acts responsibly. And if people are going to act responsibly in a voluntary manner, that's fine. But if they don't, they're putting others at risk, and so I hope that there's a enforcement provision designed to place homeowners in the position of having to coordinate their efforts, and if they don't, to have some sort of consequence, be it fiscal or otherwise. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Patrick. Dan, will you answer Patrick's question?
Yeah, so I'm going to actually go to the sort of consequence part of it. I think we've spoken pretty heavily and thoroughly now that we'll be able to tailor the rules. We're centralizing some of the inspection work. There's an option in there, we could bring it local if we wanted to from start to finish. One thing that's in there that we all agreed was helpful would be to have centralized abatement. An abatement is when you have a property owner that has refused to do something that our rules say they have to do. So you heard the fire marshal say, if he deems a tree is dead and it's a true fire hazard, he does tell the property owner it needs to come out. The abatement process is lengthy, challenging, and definitely an area where some economies of scale would be helpful. So one of the things the document talks about is centralizing that process so that we can do it a little more efficiently. We can have somebody who's sort of specializing in that particular aspect of the process. But to assure some of the previous speaker's comments about inspectors run amok, we would trigger that. We would say, within our rules, this person's now violated the rules. We would like this abated.
Okay, great. Thanks, Dan. Hi, Robin.
Hi. I'm Robin Muller, and my husband and I built our house in 1983 here in Larkspur, so I've been here a long time. In 2014, I was one of the co-leaders of the Blue Rock Neighborhood Emergency Response Group. And our initial focus was about earthquakes. And after a couple of years of working with the NRG groups focusing on earthquakes, I kind of raised my hand and started squeaking a little bit about fire, because as someone in Blue Rock, I feel, felt strongly that fire was much more likely to be our particular disaster than earthquakes. Thanks to the help of Ruben and Peter and Todd, Blue Rock is now a firewise community as well as, as Madrone Canyon, and so we're proud of that. Having said those things, what I'm recognizing, have recognized, is that Blue Rock is just this little tiny community. It's, we're 250 households, and that as a small group, we can do many things in our small community. But I really think that this collaborative, large, long-view group that, that the JPA would constitute, it offers an opportunity for, for more coherent collaborative planning. And for those reasons, I think I support the idea of the JPA. I, I don't know, I have to say, I'm just back in town, so I'm fairly uninformed about the details of it, but I, I think that anything that looks more like regional cooperative, collaborative solutions is more likely to get, to get the right actions taken. I think that as, as little tiny jurisdictions, we have a harder time getting it right.
Great. Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
I just wanted to chime in. The Todd being referenced in those comments is Todd Lando, and who works for Central Marin to do some of the firewise education. And I wanted to mention that because it was a hard, heavy lift, you'll recall, in our budget process, to figure out a way we could match Corte Madera to make sure Todd Lando was here helping our community. We had to really work to carve that money out of our budget, but we did it because it's important. I worry about if we don't have some revenue source, whether it's this one or another one, how we do the next heavy lift to make sure we have... one, how we do the next heavy lift to make sure we have the other resources we need. And the great thing about Todd is he's already highlighting for us what some of those things are that we need to start doing. So I just wanted to make, identify.
And what's Todd's title?
Vegetation Management Specialist.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hi.
He's also the head of Fire Safety Marin, which we've all used that website. My name is Tim Mossdeller, and I've lived on Acacia Avenue on Palm Hill for 45 years. I am the head of the Palm Hill NRG, the Neighborhood Response Group, and soon-to-be Firewise leader of the Palm Hill NRG Firewise USA unit. The application is all done. It's being turned in. We've reviewed it with Todd, and it's being turned in in the next week or two. Hopefully, we'll have that designation shortly. So, but more importantly, from what I want to say is, I'm a block captain, and I've been a block captain for two or three years now, and so I have talked with the people on my block extensively. And what I'm beginning to see very clearly is that what I thought in the beginning was an educational thing, that we need to get education out there about how to do, how to prevent wildfires and so on. I'm not seeing that anymore. The, you know, everybody has talked about the macro and the fuel load and so on, but I want to talk about the individual personalities that are dealing with this. And I've come to the conclusion, it's not an educational issue. It's a paradigm shift. And a paradigm shift has some requirements to it. I want to tell a quick story to illustrate this. I know a person who will be unnamed in another part of Larkspur, who has gone through a number of different educational things. They've read the booklets, read the pamphlets, had talks with their block captain and so on. And one time, I was passing by, and I said, you know, you really should take out some of these junipers there. And I explained all about why that was important. And she said, what's a juniper? And, you know, at that moment, I thought, all of that education has not stuck because the paradigm shift hasn't happened. So for a paradigm shift to happen, they have to hear a message over and over and over. It has to be a clear and consistent message. And the, you know, the marketers say it's got to be heard at least a dozen times before it takes shape. And they have to see things happen. They have to see their neighbors are following the new guidelines. And they have to see their leadership, now you can see where I'm going with this, their leadership is also following the same guidelines. And so that's why I strongly encourage the City Council of Larkspur and all the other nineteen agencies to support this and send the message that we really see this as the way we have to proceed. And when people see the leadership setting role models for how to handle this stuff, and we see neighbors beginning to make, implement the changes that are required, then we're really going to get a Fire Safe Marin.
Good point, Tim. Thank you.
Okay. Anyway, the perfect opportunity here for Larkspur to step forward, take a stance, take a lead, and encourage the community to really make that paradigm shift and to start not only understanding what a juniper is, but voluntarily taking him out.
Sounds good. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
All righty.
Cindy Winter, looking at some of the letters that we have back here, I'm amazed that people are so concerned about the 30-year planned program of this JPA, because I think it should be in perpetuity. The earth is getting hotter, and it's not going to cool down. And I think people need to be educated about that unpleasant fact. And my second comment is, it relates to the micro level of governance. I'm used to going to TAM meetings, and they have two executive committee meetings a month. They have one full board meeting a month. The public can go and speak, or just sit and listen. And I'd like to see a lot of those meetings going on with this JPA, if it's possible to organize them.
Great. Thanks, Cindy. Do you have any want to?
I've been going over my notes. I missed two things I thought I should address, but I see I have another speaker.
Okay.
I do have, okay, so one commenter noted about there only being two meetings. The law mandates one. We upped it to two. It doesn't mean the board can adopt a schedule where they meet more regularly. For example, the Police and Fire Authority are only mandated to meet once a year. However, they've adopted schedules to meet quarterly. So I'd be surprised, particularly in the early years, if they aren't meeting quite frequently. That's just the legal stipulation of what they're mandated to do. Also, I think Mr. Mullin asked about higher versus lower risk. That's a big purpose of the operational committee, is to take the Community Wildfire Protection Plan and make the prioritized recommendations. And I feel very confident that our fire experts will be recommending things in the order that they believe addresses the highest risk first.
Great. All right. Thanks, Dan.
There will definitely be a focus on the highest-risk areas as priorities.
Good. It's good to hear.
Good evening. I'm Mimi Willard from the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers. And I would like to start by saying that we have been involved in this process since June and had a good discussion with the county. We're kind of at an impasse now, unfortunately. But I want to start by emphasizing that, like everybody in this room, we think fire preparedness is really important, and we think that a countywide effort is a good goal. But we have some concerns about the particulars. One thing that I think is that the taxpayers play two important roles, or should play two important roles. One is, we're the funding mechanism. And the second one is, we should be part of a democratic process on an ongoing basis. And that's where our support breaks down and turns into opposition, which we never wanted to have happen. And we don't understand why with, I know that we're on a fast track. We want to get things done and get this accomplished quickly for the March ballot. There have been many changes to the language and the structure, and who gets what votes, and what money flows where, but we can't get any traction at all in having the simple thing of the tax resolution, tax measure come back before the voters, like most other tax measures, on some reasonable periodicity. We think 10 years would be a good approach, because this is a novel JPA. We're all being asked to take a leap of faith. That was what the words that were used last night repeatedly in Corta Madera. If we're going to take that leap of faith, we should have an opportunity to democratically weigh in as to whether we want some changes. And it's always a great thing that happens. I can't think of a renewal measure that's been turned down, but they usually get, something is tweaked a little bit when it comes back before the voters if it isn't working. That happened, for example, with Transportation Authority of Marin. That was a very healthy process. So that's what I would ask you, please, to consider on our behalf, because there is such concern about fire, that people will vote for whatever comes before them that has fire in it on a ballot measure, and your, our protection, that it comes out right. And the final thing I would say about it is that the county did do some polling. I think it was not a very large sample. The results were very perplexing. And I think that the results of those polls kind of demonstrate that people will vote for anything. So let's get it right and make sure that the taxpayers have an ongoing role. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Mimi. Please do, Kevin.
Can I just ask a question of the speaker? Mimi, before you sit down.
Mimi.
Thank you very much for those comments and for your participation and cost participation in this process over time. I think it's very appreciated to have that perspective in all of this. On your principal point about ongoing voter participation in deciding, you know, to revisit the tax, what specific proposal do you have in mind that might be considered in order to accomplish that?
So we have put together a list of what we call sensible tax criteria, which we post on our website. And we post it there in part so that jurisdictions know what we stand for, and many have worked with us, understanding what those are. And one of them says, every tax should have a sunset date, and one that is tied to the projects it funds. For most sales and parcel taxes, eight to 10 years is a reasonable maximum term. Voters then have the opportunity to renew, cancel, or amend these taxes, which can be especially important if the tax or fee or what it funds is novel. And that's exactly what we have here now, never having anticipated when we came up with that language. So we have asked that there be a renewal measure in intervals of no more than 10 years throughout what we believe would be a perpetual life. We see a potential perpetual need, but would like to have the opportunity to weigh in within 10-year intervals. And we've never really gotten a good reason why that can't be done, other than that there is a perpetual need, which could be, which we would agree with, and that it's been hard to get all of the different agencies and districts all on one page so far, and so, you know, it might get complicated, and we don't want to go through it again, basically.
And maybe Dan's going to answer your question.
Yes.
But Mimi, with this ballot language, it does say until repealed by voters.
Yeah.
How do you feel about that?
I feel, I'm trying to think of a nice way to say it. It doesn't mean anything, because we can go, we have the ability to go out and put an initiative, a repeal, anytime we want, but we have to go out and collect a pile of signatures, and it's very expensive and very time-consuming. Basically, you can't do it. Then you have to put money behind it to mount the campaign. So I don't consider that a good substitute. And I think that the other, you know, latest amendment is kind of a, like, an effort, but I don't think it's a useful effort, that every 10 years, the County Board of Supervisors shall hold a public meeting to consider the effectiveness. It's, I mean, just put it on the ballot, and make what changes are bubbling up as being needed, and it will pass.
Great. Kevin, any more questions for Mimi?
No, she answered my question.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mimi.
Do you have any want to answer the questions, please?
Well, I haven't been privy to Ms. Willard's particular conversations, so I don't, you know, she made some references to not getting answers. I don't know those. First, I'd like to start with, this document reflects a lot of interests, and I've been focusing on the nineteen agencies, who all brought all sorts of things to the table. And I don't think any single person who participated got every single thing that they proposed. And then to the credit of the core leadership of the steering committee for this, they did create a process to bring in stakeholder groups and vet a lot of these ideas. And you have some late mail from other stakeholder groups that are still lobbying for things they feel they didn't achieve. The totality of what's before you represents the compromise of everybody involved. Speaking specifically to the flow of money into the agency, there's a couple of things to keep in mind. One is, the need is always going to be there. So a lot of what's driving this is the thought of the need and what's there. The second thing is, they did do polling, and as I told you, sometimes the polling runs counter to my instinct and intuition, but I've learned over the years that when the pollsters tell me this is what the voters want to see in front of them, I should go with that opinion, because they have a track record of being correct in this county. And so the structure of this measure reflects their recommendation. The other thing is, I'd actually like to push back a little bit about how healthy the TAM process is. I don't know that I always agree with that. The TAM process requires that a lot of interest groups get a chance to have dedicated funding allocated without prioritization. And you've heard speakers tonight say, one of their main issues is prioritization. And this has been structured to make sure prioritization's done professionally and not politically, while recognizing that, from a political level, we need to make sure everybody's being touched and everybody's being helped. That took a lot of work to get us there. So then it comes down to trust. Do you trust your elected officials to manage money that you've entrusted them with? Do you trust your appointed officials to make professional recommendations? You have to make a decision about that, and that's at the core of this decision.
Okay. Dan, maybe I wasn't listening, but what about the 10-year? She mentioned 10 years.
That's in this amendment now.
Well, this amendment's to give an opportunity for there to be a discussion every 10 years. She's suggesting that there be a sunset every 10 years. That's another area I disagree with. Not every measure should be eight or 10 years, because sometimes you need to enter into contracts and obligations that go well beyond 10 years. One of the items, for example, that I think will need to be talked about by this new entity is, as I understand, the chief can correct me, a big need that's talked about in the plan is to create seasonal wildfire crews and have them out dealing with issues. And we need somewhere to keep those crews and their equipment. And in all likelihood, there won't be enough money in the first couple of years to just build those sorts of things, plus we want to get operations rolling. So it's quite possible, I'm not saying it's going to be a certainty, and it'll be up to the board of this JPA, but it's quite possible they'll need to talk about some level of debt in order to finance something like that. And so no lending agency's going to lend against a 10-year tax.
Okay. Okay. Any, thank you, Dan. Any other questions from the public?
Madam Mayor.
Oh, Kevin, of course.
One question on that last point. That's, the prospect of using the revenues that would be generated by the tax to support going out and getting bond financing is something that hasn't really been discussed much in the public. That certainly hasn't been part of the process. What that we've had tonight or in prior conversations, if that is something that is actively being considered by the folks putting this together, what is it that is being envisioned we would need bond financing for? I mean, the example that you just gave a moment ago for like kind of ongoing support for fire crews doesn't really sound like the sort of thing you'd be going at and getting.
No, I'm sorry. I was unclear. We may need to build a building.
That's what I want to get at that.
Now, I'm not talking about building a palace, but I'm also not talking about necessarily building a building somewhere that costs less than we necessarily would have to both achieve operational goals and deal with the construction. We don't have a design yet for anything like that, and that decision hasn't been made. But if you open up the plan, the community wildfire plan, you're going to see this discussion about seasonal fire crews. about seasonal fire crews. And that just becomes a question, well, where are they going to be? And how are they going to be housed? And how is their equipment going to be safely stored? So, I see that's where it's headed, but I don't want my comments to be interpreted as anybody's decided that, and I apologize if it suggested that. I think anybody who reads that plan and has attended the numerous presentations over the last two years of lessons learned and what we need to do going forward, will come to the conclusion that I've come to, that there's a high probability that will need to happen. But no one's written down that that will happen.
And I understand that, and that's actually why I want to bring that out in the conversation tonight, because I do think that what you're saying is probably true, that what is going to be required in terms of implementing the strategies that the JPA will need to pursue will have some infrastructure components to it. And that, those infrastructure components has not been something that has been spotlighted in the conversation about these proposals. And I want to make sure that there is an awareness with the public that those are possibly things that we might be having to confront.
I can concede your broader point and quibble a little bit with exactly how you're saying it. I think you have to take the totality of the last three years of public discourse on this issue. And in the totality of the public discourse, all of this has been out there, and all of it's been on the table. And so, nobody's trying to backdoor any idea, and nobody's trying to say we haven't talked about any of these things, because not only have we talked about them, we've been talking about them publicly in numerous forms. What I'm saying is, this JPA has all this authority, it has all these powers, and if you go back and review all of these things, it's not a magic leap to think, it's not a big leap to think that we'll land there. So, I appreciate your broader point, that that's something on the table, and that's a point to be made. But I also just want to make sure it's not presented to the public that that's something somebody's been secretively planning.
And forgive me if I was creating the impression in my comments that somehow there's been a deception. I don't, that wasn't my intent. My only intent is to make sure there's clarity in the public conversation about the range of things that could be possible in terms of the way funds generated through a voter-approved tax measure could be applied to. I'm not suggesting at all that there's any kind of secrecy or anything like that. Personally, I understand that when you're talking about, you know, people-intensive programs, you're going to need infrastructure to support people-intensive programs, and that's fair. I just want to make sure that there's an, that this is brought out as part of the public conversation.
Thank you, and I completely agree with the need to bring it out. I think I'm sensitive to the way we bring it out, because a lot of the discourse and debate that occurred last night in Cordera Madera, that is occurring in the halls of various government entities about this issue, that's been touched on a little bit here tonight, is distrust and trust issues. And one thing I just want to be clear, I think we've talked this stuff to death. We need to act, and that's why I'm comfortable bringing this to you now. And I think, I admit, my job is to be paying attention to all these things. Chief Schertz's job is to be paying attention to all these things. So, we're probably better informed than the average person of what's been talked about over the last three years, but it's been talked about, and it'll keep being talked about whether or not we move forward with this or not.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and close the public comments and right back to the dais. Council members, any more questions for Dan? We do have a resolution to look at, just to put it out there. Yes, Dan Helmer.
Well, I'll be ready to make a motion after the council discussion, if that's appropriate. But I just wanted to make a comment that, in any of the major efforts that we've taken part in in the last five, six years are roadway paving measures, MCE, for example, they're all dependent on securing a resource in order to make, to be able to invest within themselves and build energy projects that are bringing renewables close to the user, building infrastructure for our city, repaving neighborhood streets, they're all dependent on being able to leverage and secure a financial resource. And so, all of these things require the same effort and basically the same simple structure with different labels that go with the mechanisms. So, this is built on our past practice of doing things together and the way that we've handled ourselves in the city. There's nothing about any of this that's not, that's not consistent with how we currently operate. So, I just want that to be out there. We're doing things based on our past experience, past successful experiences. So, I think that we can feel comfortable that we have enough of the interests represented in this process that we can move forward and work out the outstanding issues.
And as Dan said, it's been discussed for three years now, so, well discussed. Any other questions for our city manager or attorney or, yes, Larry?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to follow on, you know, what Dan has said. You know, I mentioned earlier about MCCMC JPA Oversight Committee, and, you know, one of the reasons why I got involved in public service to begin with is, you know, and this is back in like, 2003, is, you know, Marin County wasn't getting good economies of scale with the different services they provide, especially when it comes to state mandated things. And we still have a disconnect between the public and what cities and the counties actually do in a sense. And I want to reinforce what, you know, Dan pointed out at the beginning of the meeting. JPAs are not new to Marin municipalities and public agencies. We participate in over 30 of them. You know, this one won't even be the biggest one. You know, MIRA has more participants with 25 members, and Kevin, I don't know how big MCE has gotten, but that's not --
I think several thousand at this point.
Yeah, but that one isn't even a Marin JPA, because we've now included people from other counties that don't even necessarily share exactly the same values, other than the fact that clean energy is one of the core components. And that's the same thing we have here with fire. So, yeah, nothing's going to be perfect. I think one of the good things about JPAs is that, aside from the collaboration that we get, because it's more of a collegial neighborly thing, you also have the flexibility to make changes, you also have the ability to self-govern. You know, that's lost if you decide to go with the special district. You know, probably the most successful JPA here in Central Marin is Central Marin Police Authority. That's been around since 1980. It still remains the only JPA in the state for police services. You know, we hear a lot of people saying at these statewide meetings on public safety or League of California Cities, how that's such a great idea, but when it comes to implementing something like that, nobody ever does because of fear. You know, fear is, you know, that can't stop us from doing this, because it has to be done. And, you know, at this point, we also, as the old saying goes, can't let perfection be the enemy of the good as well. So, I'm sure and ready to support this motion.
Okay, so.
Just one response to that. First of all, I just want to make clear that I would be the last member of this council to advocate the creation of a special district to deal with this issue. I have my own experience with JPAs, and it's a positive one, and I want folks to understand that my comments tonight are reflective, to some extent, of that experience. I do worry about the tax issue. I worry about the kind of never-ending aspects of these things and the self-perpetuating nature of any tax that doesn't have a sunset on it. At the same time, I also worry about the underlying issue that is driving us to the point where we are tonight, where we have to confront this decision. And again, I want to express my great appreciation to our city manager for the leadership that he has shown in working through these tough issues with multiple jurisdictions and dealing with, I'm sure, a myriad different perspectives on every little knit and twitch that has gone into the process. So, I'm very grateful for that. I have one question that I want to ask before I express my opinion about the outcome tonight, but it's a question about timing. So, my understanding from what has been said is that the, kind of the drop-dead date for us to act and other municipalities to act on this proposal is the end of the month. We do have one more city council session scheduled, but I understand that we have some quorum issues that may make it difficult for us, perhaps, to defer that decision beyond tonight. So, if I could maybe just get some clarity on that.
Two of the council have asked to be excused from the October 16th meeting, so that was something we took into account, bringing this to you tonight instead of on the 16th.
Okay, and I appreciate that, and that was something that I understood. I think it is really a matter of what the council, what the council's pleasure is in terms of acting tonight or deferring in light of those circumstances, and I'm perfectly happy to go along with the sense of the council and its decision in that regard.
Well, in reference to that, wouldn't we need to then decide, first of all, whether we are going to accept and recommend these first, these recommended amendments be added to the JPA, brought back to us before we?
So, earlier tonight Fairfax and Nevada passed this, I'm told, with the amendments.
With these three amendments.
Yes, and I believe going forward, that's what's going to happen. So, I would encourage you to, if you're going to consider the JPA, just consider it with these amendments included. I'd encourage that that be the motion.
But structurally, wouldn't, doesn't that have to first go through the board of supervisors?
No, so, we're an equal contract member of the JPA.
I see.
Everyone is, so, anyone, what we're trying to do is, say tonight, we had some last-minute issues, we worked them out. Unfortunately, five agencies, including the county, voted on the earlier iteration. Let's not have everybody vote on the earlier iteration and then go make these amendments. Let's incorporate them tonight. Everyone going forward, incorporate them. The county and the five, four other agencies can all schedule a meeting to take care of this. The county can do this when they take up the issue of the ballot measure.
All right.
Great, okay. Dan Helmer?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. We'd like to hear it.
I believe it should be the action of the council to take this on this evening, just
given the timing and the perception of the conversation through the county. I think it'd be good to hear from Central Marin this evening, so that everybody else considering this can pay attention to our conversation. And with that, I'd like to move the stack recommendation with the inclusion of the three amendments.
Second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? I see none. Passes. That's great.
Let the record reflect a unanimous vote. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Dan, thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Chief, yours too.
Yes, thank you so much. Chief Weber's in the audience tonight. Thank you very much.
Yes, where's Chief Weber? Hey, hi. All right, good start. Thank you. May we just take a three-minute break?
It's fine with me, Madam Mayor.
Let's do it. Okay. We're going to continue on with our council meeting of October the 2nd. We took a little break. It is now 9:20, so welcome back, everybody. We're going to continue on with our business items. We have 8.2, refinancing a pension debt through the issuance and sales of bonds. Counsel to consider authorizing issuance of bonds in order to reduce interest associated with paying its unfunded obligations to the California Public Employees Retirement Fund, CALPERS. So, Dan, will you give us an update?
I will, Madam Mayor.
The staff report?
Very briefly, and then I'm going to turn it over to other people in the room.
Sure.
To do, to take it up. I was, it's not that long ago, I was before you saying, would you please authorize me to work with a team to get us to the point of having this discussion? We have a great team, and they're very efficient, and it only took us two weeks to be back here with a proposal for you to consider. As we talked about at the last meeting, we have a window of opportunity here to look at an obligation, a debt that we have, and refinance it in a way that's very helpful to the city. And the gentlemen who are here, your municipal advisor, Wolf Hansen, they're going to take you through a presentation to explain exactly what is proposed that we do. So, I'm going to, is it Mark or, who's going to do the intro? Both of you. I'll have Mark Pressman, who we've known from many meetings in the past, kick us off.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for letting us come here and stand before you. I'm Mark Pressman with Wolf Hansen Company. I've worked with the city for many, many years. With me tonight is Bud Levine and Rob Penkranz from Wolf Hansen as well. We also are armed and dangerous. We have bond counsel, Brian Quint, wherever he is.
Hi, Brian.
Of Quentin Timick. He's the bond attorney for the city. What I'd like to do is turn this over to Bud Levine. He's our resident expert in pension obligation and has extensive communication with CALPERS in getting this kind of transaction done successfully. So, with that, I'd like to let Bud take over. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Mark.
Good evening, council, Madam Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm a longtime resident of Marin County, almost 45 years, and I've been working with Wolf Hansen for 15, but Mark has kind of controlled most of the Marin County cities. So, I usually deal in the Central Valley and north of San Francisco, north of the Bay Area, and it's a pleasure to be working on a local community, especially one as excellent as the City of Larkspur. We're going to talk about the unfunded actuarial liabilities that have been developed through CALPERS managing the retirement program for the city. That CALPERS is the largest retirement, maybe I should do this. It's the largest retirement system in the United States. City of Larkspur is one of the participants. So, I thought I would try to make this first part real brief. Your city manager did an amazing job in the staff report. I think it's one of the best I've seen in describing how the situation developed and what the plan is to take care of it. Basically, the way an unfunded liability is created is that CALPERS requires a certain amount of money to be put up by the city every year to fund the retirement benefits of each of your plans, so there are sufficient funds available when your employees in those plans retire. They also come up with a formula that determines what type of investment return they're going to need to add to that sum of money that is put up every year, so that you have sufficient funds. In the event in CALPERS performance, they do not equal the stated rate of return that they believe needs to be reached. There's a shortfall that exists in the retirement plan. That's known as your unfunded actuarial liabilities. Currently, the interest rate and the return rate that CALPERS requires is 7%. That started at 7 and 3/4% years ago. It has gradually been reduced to where it's now at 7%. So, bottom line, there's a sum of money that the city is putting up every year. CALPERS manages that money. If they don't reach a 7% return to add to the pool of money in the plan, an unfunded liability exists. That's a responsibility of the city. This slide, I don't think, is very relevant to what we're doing, but now, the unfunded liabilities are, in effect, an obligation of the city to make that payment to the fund in order to bring your funds up to the required amount. In addition, CALPERS charges 7%, that's going to be accrued to that unfunded In addition, CALPERS charges 7% as that's going to be accrued to that unfunded liability until it's paid. What's interesting about that is that the unfunded has been created because CALPERS didn't earn the 7%. And now that they didn't earn the 7%, the city's required to make that shortfall up by paying the money to the fund, and they have to pay that same 7% because CALPERS would have, thought they would have earned 7% if that money had been there in the first place. Kind of unfair, but that's the reality of the, of the program. The, CALPERS, if the city has not made those payments and the unfunded continues, which it has in the case with Larkspur, as almost all cities, CALPERS provides an amortization schedule that then the city will pay over a certain period of years in order to pay up that unfunded. Included in that amortization payment, and that's similar to a debt, there's the 7% interest rate that's involved. As the payments are made by, by CALPERS, made to CALPERS, the process continues every year. In any given year where CALPERS earns less than the 7%, the unfunded liability then goes up. If they earn more than 7%, then there's a credit against the unfunded liabilities, and the liabilities will then, will then drop. Remember that this obligation, this, this amount that is owed to CALPERS is an obligation of the city, very similar to a bond. It's almost like a, a bond with a 7% interest rate. So there are several different options that the city can look at as to how to make up that unfunded liability. They can continue to pay the amortization schedule. They can then take surplus funds, if you have surplus funds, and put that into either a reserve fund and invest that and use that to pay down the unfunded, or you can make payments from the surplus directly, make those payments to reduce the, the obligation. The third possibility, which we're going to talk about tonight, is to issue general obligation bonds that are validated through a validation suit that, for pledging the general fund to making the payments. The same payments that you're currently making to CALPERS, you would make instead on the bonds. The proceeds of the bonds would be used to pay off the unfunded liability, and your unfunded liability at that point would go to zero. So you would not owe anything more, and your plan would be fully funded. However, you now have zero liabilities under the unfunded plan, and if the, you're making payments instead on the bonds, and I'll get into that in just a minute, of the actual numbers. The thing to keep in mind is the process continues. So in the next year after you've paid off the unfunded, if CALPERS does not earn the 7%, you now have a new unfunded liability that starts accruing. Many cities are confused by the fact of what happens if CALPERS outperforms their 7%. If there's a greater return with your unfunded liability at zero, that, some cities have thought that that money is lost. Some cities feel that it goes to CALPERS as a bonus, and others feel that it's shared by the other cities that, that are unfunded. It doesn't, none of that happens. It continues to accrue to your plan and acts as a surplus, almost like a reserve, so that in the future, if there are unfunded liabilities, that money can be used to pay those unfunded. It's not lost. They don't pay you interest on it, which is something I think is somewhat unfair, but it sits there as a reserve as long as it's there, until there's unfunded. Now, we know there's probably going to be unfunded because over the years, look at what happened to Larkspur. You have $18 million in unfunded liabilities. This is water, by the way. Now let's take a look at the unfunded liabilities that you do have. Currently, there's six plans that the city has. We're going to concentrate on two of them. The other plans either are too small, or they're part of the PEPRA plans, where there's not the same type of unfunded that's being created. So there's the miscellaneous plan and the safety fire first plan, total of $18,259. These are the amounts that would be due, where the liability would exist as of June 30th, 2020. The current payments that are being made are already paid up through that period. So that's the amount that we're going to look at to, to pay off. The yearly payment that would be due, beginning in the fiscal year 2021, which would be due in July of 2020, is $1,375.57. I want to do a little clarification on that because that's the amount that CALPERS has presented to the city as the amount of their payment to pay up the unfunded liabilities for that particular year, the payment on the amortization schedule for that year. There's a discount that is available if it's paid in cash. These amounts, and I'll show you the full list of the amounts in just a minute, are based on the monthly payment that CALPERS has indicated would be due, beginning July 1st, in this last case of, or this case, July 1st of 2020 through June 30th of 2021. So the $1,375.57 is 12 times the monthly payment that's going to be due. Some cities pay that on a monthly basis because they frankly don't have the funds to do anything else but do it on a monthly basis. Cities that do have the funds, if they pay it off on a yearly basis and they pay it before July 31st, they get a 3% discount. All of the numbers that we've run, and this is because we want to be sure we're doing the proper disclosure, are based on the monthly payments on an annualized basis, even though you've been paying with a 3% discount. Reason for that is twofold. Number one, CALPERS can very easily change that discount. It's not really written in any of the rules. It is simply something that they offer currently. Secondly, the city may find itself in a situation where it's not convenient or not able to make that yearly payment at that time and has to do monthly. So therefore, we've done all of our calculations on that. When we come back for the next presentation, which would be, if you approve this moving forward, the final numbers, we will do both analysis. We'll do an analysis based on the monthly and an analysis based on the yearly with the, with the discount. So now let's take a look at the current amortization schedule that you have with CALPERS and the amount of obligation that the city is facing. Now, if you look at, there's two columns here, the safety fire first tier and the miscellaneous. Those are the yearly payments that are required on each, and the totals are in the last column. So you can see there's the $1,375.57 in the first number in the, in the right-hand column, which equals the previous slide. And those payments would continue for a period of 20, actually, it's 26 years for the safety fire and 25 years for the miscellaneous. And you'll notice that the total payments are $32,870. CALPERS doesn't break out the interest component of each annual payment, but they show you what the total interest is under this schedule at the end. But 7% is the effective rate that you are currently paying. So if you don't do anything, you will continue to pay this obligation at a 7% interest rate. And I'll show you in a minute the effect that has on the overall. So we would propose that you issue a pension obligation bond, the proceeds of which would go to pay off both the safety fire and the miscellaneous plan. And you can see from this, this slide, the total amount of the bond issued would be $18,645. Now, we're going to do two things in this, in this issuing these bonds. Number one, we're going to dramatically lower the interest rate. Number two, we're going to shorten the term. So we feel that based on the savings that can be generated, we don't have to go out to 25 years. We can do it in 20 years, and therefore, you would only be making payments on paying up your unfunded for 20 years, meaning the last five and six years where you previously would be paying, uh, payments, you're paying no payments. And therefore, the full amount of the payments that you would have paid are available for savings. The breakdown further on this is you would issue $18,645,000. You would have the $18,259 to pay off CALPERS. Your unfunded then goes to zero. You're fully funded on your retirement plan as of June 30th, 2020. There would be $235,000 in cost of issuance, and I'm going to give you a breakdown in just a minute on that $235,000. And then there's $149,160. That's our estimate on the high side of the underwriting fee that would be paid to the underwriter that uses, that presents the most successful response to a competitive bid that would be utilized to, to determine the underwriter and the selling of the bonds. Any questions so far? Next slide is something that our bond council's here, so have to be sure to emphasize this particular slide. It's a regulation that the advisor putting this together at this stage in the process, we need to make a good faith estimate of what the results of selling these bonds will be when they finally come to market and produce the final results. These are the required disclosures. It's based on the current marketplace, and the market has been unbelievably attractive for issuing bonds. I don't know how much you follow the, the bond market, but as of today, the 30-year treasury bond, 30-year government treasury bond is at 2.07. Think about that. If an investor comes along that wants to buy a government bond from the United States, AAA rated, they get a 2.07 interest rate, and they wait 30 years to get their principal back. The 10-year is at a 1.61. Now, to put that in perspective, in November of 2018, the 10-year was at a 3.30, and now it's a 1.6. The 30-year was at a 3.75, and now it's at a 2.06. There's never been a greater opportunity to take advantage of a bond market and be an issuer, regardless of what your project is, as long as it's a needed project. Then the whole time I have been in the business, and I've been in the business almost 50 years, I've never seen rates this low. I lived through the rates when they were 21% prime rate and when mortgage rates were at 25% in 1979 and 1980. Everybody survived, and now I've been, been here long enough to be through the, the era of these incredibly low rates. It's a gift that the market is giving any type of issuer. I know there are a lot of people and a lot of councils that I talk to that are basically opposed to debt. They just have a feeling that debt is not the right way to go on, on, on providing funds for projects. Even those council members in those cities are issuing now because these rates are so amazingly low. So 2.70 is our estimate of what the average, the true interest cost will be for this particular issue. Now, it's going to be dependent on where the market is when we actually come to market. But if we're doing it right now and we're required to give a good faith estimate on that at the, at the present time, a 2.07. Cost of issuance, which I will show you a breakdown in a minute, we already said is $235,000. Underwriters' discount again is just an estimate on our part, but I believe it's a high estimate, and if we get to the resolution, you'll see that the resolution will even have in it that the, that the underwriters' discount cannot exceed $7.50 per bond, which would equal the $149,150. It'll probably be lower than that. The total financing charge then is $385,000. The net proceeds from this issuance would be $18,259, which is the amount to pay off the unfunded. The total sum of all the payments will be $23 million. That will become very important in one of my future slides when we compare the debt service for this issue versus what you're currently paying to CALPERS. And finally, there is something called net present value, NPV, of savings. That's a requirement of all refinancings. In fact, I know you have a debt management policy, and to put this in perspective, I believe your debt management, Mark, you would probably know, the debt management policy, I believe, has a guideline that if you're doing a refunding, you have to have 3%, 3, not 30, 3% savings in order to make it reasonably viable to do. We usually like to make sure it's 6% to 10%. This is 30%. And what it means is the savings that are being generated on a cash flow basis, what the present value of those savings are. If you have a dollar paid in one year, it's worth over 90 cents in present value. If you have a dollar paid in the 20th year, it's going to be worth something like 25 or 30 cents. So we take all of the combination of all of the savings on an annual basis, determine what the net present value is as of today, and we apply those savings to the total amount of debt that's outstanding. And if it's at least 3% or 6%, it's a very good situation. This is 30% of that number. Now, this is a breakdown of the, and not all advisors, when they're at this stage in the presentations, do this, but we like to. So this is a breakdown of what we feel right now are the estimates of the cost of issuance and where that's going to go. You can see bond counsel, disclosure counsel, that's municipal advisor, which is us. You see the city attorney. I'm not sure whether you're going to want need fees for this over and above what you're doing, but we have funds set aside for that, including some in miscellaneous. So we just have a placeholder for that. We have a trustee and escrow fee. We have the validation suit that's going to occur. We have a rating fee. We believe that, that will be around $25,000. We believe the city's going to get an extremely positive rating. A little aside about that, I have, I have experienced, I've done four of these over the last year and a half. In every single case, when we've gone to standard and pores for a rating, we have gotten an upgrade from the rating that currently existed because they were doing pension obligation bonds and taking care of that liability and replacing it with a lower outlay. So that was somewhat a validation of that this is, this is a positive move for any city to be, to be doing. And then we have a miscellaneous number in here, just to cover, you know, unanticipated costs. Now, let's get to, this is, this is the, we showed you before the payment schedule from CALPERS on the amortization schedule. Here is what we believe would be the debt service schedule for a 20-year bond, $18,645,000 over the 20-year period, that it would be needed to fully amortize it, and this is the debt service. Take a look at the interest rates, and you'll notice that this is, there's different ways bonds are structured. This would be a structure where each maturity has its own interest rate, and then, and of course, normal yield curve, the low, the shorter term has lower interest, and the longer term has higher interest. And I know some of you that really follow this will be saying, well, what about the inverted yield curves we've been seeing these days? And we've been seeing that with the government bonds where the one, well, the two-year has a higher yield than the five-year, and the five-year at times has a higher yield than the 10-year. Normally, that signifies a recession in the future, but there's a lot of, of market activity now because there's zero interest rates in the rest of the world that is causing a lot of interest in our bonds, which is also part of the reason that the long bond is at the 2.06. But anyway, the normal yield curve starts low and then increases, and you can see, we have a 190. have a 190 out to a 3.02. The total interest cost on average of all of these rates becomes the 2.70 that we showed in the earlier slide. So, and you'll notice that of the 18, this is a key thing to look at, the $18,645 principal amount of the bond, and in the debt service schedule, as you can see, which starts at $958,000, goes to, back down to $177 at the end, for a total of $23,225. Look at the interest that you're paying, $4,580,000. Keep that in mind, and we'll come back to that in a minute. This is now the savings that will be generated by, we have the amortization schedule that CalPERS have provided and that you're currently paying. That's the column on the left. The middle column is the 20-year pension obligation bond that we just went through. There's a $23,225 with no payments from 2040 to 44. And then you can see the savings of $9,647. Now, remember what I said earlier, that if you're taking advantage of the discount, that would be a 3% discount on each of the payments that you would pay with CalPERS? We will do another analysis when we come back to show, when we get the final numbers that show the savings this way, which is based on the monthly payments times 12, and another one that will show the savings with the yearly. Rough estimate would be, I believe, the $9,647. If you took advantage of the 3% discount every single year, would drop probably to about 8.8, 8.9. So, it still would be a significantly large savings. And that would be a worst-case analysis that you would be paying, the worst case in this case is you would be paying that 3% every year. If you don't, then you would be closer to the 9.6. And the last, the last slide is one that shows you kind of an easy summary to look at. The blue, the top, the top level, shows the current CalPERS payment. So, your total balance is $18,259. Your total scheduled payments to CalPERS, $32,873. Look at the interest you pay, $14,614 is what you're paying if you don't do anything and just continue to pay CalPERS on that schedule. You're going to be paying $14 million in interest. If you do the bonds, you have $18,645, slightly higher because you have to cover the cost of issuance and the underwriting fee. Your total payments are $23,225 versus $32 million. Your total interest is $4,005 versus $14,006. And your total savings, as we showed in the previous, is $9,600,000. So, that is the summary of everything we're looking at, we're proposing to have you accept. If you move forward, the next step would be to have your city attorney, along with Bond Council, file the validation suit. That validation suit will take anywhere from 60 to maybe 90 days to complete. Once we have that, we would come back to the council with the selling document called a preliminary official statement that you would approve. And at that point, we would have a much closer look at the market compared to when we would actually be pricing the bonds, be able to do another analysis, so you would know what to expect. And then we would go through the competitive process of obtaining an underwriter with a proposal to purchase the bonds. There would then be a sale of the bonds, closing of the bonds on the close. CalPERS will be paid off completely, and you would start the process of the new debt service replacing the old debt service. So, I'm here to answer any questions.
Well done.
Thank you.
Not an easy task.
Councilmembers, any questions? Dan?
This might seem a dumb question. How come there are these parallel universes that have to operate and kind of fix one another? Why aren't these opportunities being appreciated by the state so that we don't have to find a workaround?
You know what? You've asked me a question way beyond my pay grade.
It's a good question.
Yeah, it is a good question. I look, I talk to CalPERS all the time, and I can tell you that right now, you know, one of, some of the questions that come up is, well, it's come down to 7%. Well, where is it going to go? Is it going to go any lower? They don't think so, but internally, when they talk among themselves, the actuaries and the people that are handling the investments, they think somewhere between 6% and 7% is about all they're ever going to really do. Now, they would never say that super publicly because they have had times when they, when they do earn a little bit more. But, you know, it's a program that we have, and, you know, there's a lot that could be fixed with it. You know, I've had some councils ask me, why wouldn't you do this? What's the negative for doing it? And the only thing that I've been able, and I've heard all of the, all of the consultants, and I'm sure you've heard them in your meetings about pros and cons of why you should do something or not. And the only one that is even close to making any sense is the fact that, right now with CalPERS, you have what we call a soft debt. A soft debt is one where there's all kinds of requirements, but if you don't make your payments, the police don't show up the next day, or the lawyers don't show up the next day with the lawsuit. It's not a default right away. Ultimately, it will be, but there's a little flexibility. When you do a bond, now you have a firm obligation, but look at the savings you're generating by doing that. So...
Well, I think one of the presumptions that we have to make is that the city still views the pension obligation as an obligation irrespective of it being debt. So, unless you're in the mentality that you are going to default on your pension obligations, which is not any, you know, good faith practice. There really isn't any difference.
Yeah. I agree totally with you, but I'm just saying, those, that's an argument that I have heard that has at least some semblance in accuracy as to ultimately what that, what that would do. From a reality point of view, you would have difficulty getting new employees. You would be making your current employees and the recent retirees extremely nervous that their pension obligation would not be realized, that their, that their payments would not be realized. You'd have difficulty hiring people. I mean, there's all kinds of ramifications, and ultimately, the CalPERS will find a way to force this more vigorously. I know that's been under discussion.
Well, with the ones that we have seen default, what they've done is negotiated a discount in terms of what the benefits will be.
Right.
So, you have one JPA that's getting like 10 cents on a dollar.
Yes, exactly. That doesn't augur well for the future. Plus, your bond rating would go way down if you did something like that.
Now, the other thing is, you know, you mentioned about the possibility of never being superfunded again. But I think that goes to the discussion about what their estimated returns are going to be. By their own admission, if you look at their portfolio mix right inside our own audit, which is disclosed each year, the average, the weighted average of that portfolio mix is 3.7% for the next 10 years.
Right.
So, I don't even know how they can stop at 6% of the discount rate except for the political aspect of the employer not being able to make up the difference.
I agree with you.
Now, you said 7 and 3/4%. It actually started at 8 and 1/4, so they got a much bigger gap to close.
Absolutely. You know, one of the things that jumps out at me when I've looked at this whole program, in the few years where there is a surplus, we talked about the surplus being, sitting there in your account, in this case, it would be sitting in the Larkspur account, and let's say they have a good year where there's $180,000 or $200,000 surplus that's generated that year, and it sits there. When there's a, when there's a deficit, when there's an unfunded liability, what do they do? They charge you the 7%, so they stay current. Well, then, why don't they pay the city 7% because that's their estimated rate of return on the surplus funds that are there? That's something that I think with the right approach, a group of cities could maybe make a difference in getting CalPERS to take a look at that.
Good luck.
I was going to say, fat chance of that.
That's above my pay. Some other city do that.
I now understand this. I now understand my earlier question. I've answered my own.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just have to put this in the experiences that I have now where I'm professionally licensed, and every year I go through five hours of learning new exceptions to the, to the rule.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Kevin?
Thank you very much for that entertaining presentation. Appreciate it very much. And you mentioned the, one of my scary bugaboos, which is the inverted yield curve. And although you did mention something that was comforting to me, which is the fact that there's a zero interest rate everywhere else in the world but the United States, and maybe that's mitigating that, so that's good.
To that point, I saw a statistic, I believe there is, I think, $17 trillion of bonds issued in the rest of the world that are under 0%.
I don't, I know how that's mathematically possible, but...
In Germany, in Germany, a 30-year bond is at 50 basis points under 0. So, when you invest in a German, 30-year German bond, you pay Germany 50 basis points a year to hold on to your money for you while it's sitting there because they have no other place to go that is as secure with, for the large money.
So, I'm going to defer my long-term retirement plans about going to Germany. Just, just on the inverted yield issue, I mean, that, the concept isn't reflected in your interest rate schedule on slide 14, and you mentioned that.
Yes.
Can you just explain why, why we're getting, why you're using those numbers and it's not reflecting those are the realities of the market?
Well, there's a difference between the Treasury market, which is a taxable market, and the tax-exempt market. And right now, the tax-exempt market, these are the rates, these are the levels. These are actual quotes from several banks that I know would be potential private placement buyers. We ran an analysis in talking to them. We talked to several underwriters that if we were pricing this, and we don't say who it is, if we were pricing a double-A credit for a pension obligation for 20 years, what would your scale look like? And that's, that's what we came up with.
So, these are, these are just the hard numbers, and it's a function, it's a function of the tax aspect.
The municipal bond market does not do, does not react too much to the inversion unless it gets really big. And that inversion, by the way, existed for about a month and a half. It is still not, it's no longer inverted, but it's very close to being inverted. You've got a very, well, what we call a flat yield curve, which is a great, also a great interest rate structure in which to be issuing. If you can issue 10-year bonds, for example, and the rate is 1.6%, and you can issue 20-year bonds where the rate is 1.8%, you're only paying 20 basis points to get a whole 10 years worth of use of the money where you don't have to pay it back so fast. So, to cities that have, or to any borrower, corporations that have need for borrowing money, and yet they have to worry about how fast they amortize the principal amount. They can lower their principal payments by going 20 years, and they're not paying a penalty. I grew up and developed in this business where the yield curve used to be 1% for one year and 6% and 7% for 30, where there would be the nice, normal yield curve. Now, you're very, very flat, and if you have the inverted yield curve, that's crazy.
So, you may be a happier person tonight, having heard, heard that.
Well, go ahead, sorry.
Well, no, that, I had just one, one more question. It actually goes to some of the late mail that we've gotten tonight about concerns about, you know, how fast this is going and, you know, the discussion. But everything that you said tonight just reinforces the impression that I've had since we've begun this conversation, which is time is of the essence.
Absolutely.
And I even worry, just given the, the time that it will just naturally take in order to get this done with the validation suit and all that kind of stuff, are we, are we, is there any market risk associated with that process?
Let me address that because I have, now, again, this is just my opinion. I've been doing this a long time. I think my opinion is fairly decent, but you never know. Events in the world could make a dramatic change. Our opinion at Wolf Hansen is that we're in a very low environment of low interest rates. They're extremely low right now, but even over the next 60, 90, 120 days, I think they will remain in a low range. Does that mean that they will be at the 1.6 that the 10-year is today? Probably not. But is it going to go to 2.5%? I don't think so. I think it's going to be in an area where our savings in this program are still going to be extremely attractive, and we'll have a little bit of control on timing as we get closer. The big event is to get the validation suit finished.
I'll ask Brian, what's your general opinion right now? I know it's hard to say, but...
As you said earlier, 60 to 90 days. It depends.
That's good.
As Bud said, I've done four or five of these in the last year, some counties. Try to do this in LA County.
Brian, can you come, can you come on up? Sorry, everyone wants to hear what you have to say.
Sure, sure. I'm sorry. I was going to say that... Introduce yourself. Brian, Quinton Timmick, sorry. The validation suit will take 60 to 90 days, could be a little faster, could be a little slower, it depends. I've done four of these this year. You do it in LA County, it's a black hole, it takes a long time. We did it in Yuba County, and it was a slam dunk. And so, 60 to 90 days is, I think, a good range, and I'll be working with Sky and his firm, so I don't expect there to be any problems.
Any other questions for Brian? Or for Bud? No?
You know, an answer also to your question, we'll do everything in our power to have everything kind of ready to go. So, as the validation suit is completed, we can quickly go to the next level, which will be to get the POS to you for approval, to get a competitive bid process going so that we can take advantage. Now, if we see the market going crazy like it did a couple of weeks ago, where it went from up 20 basis points one day, and two days later it went down 15 or 20 because there's a lot of events going on in Washington and internationally that need to calm down, we would slow the process until we get a handle on where this is going to level out. If, on the other hand, we see it where it's really low, and it doesn't, we better get there as quickly as we can, we will do that.
Yeah, I just, I just worry about the unwanted tweet that might...
I was just going to say, take away Twitter.
I wake up every morning, and that's the first thing I look at because I know it's going to have a direct effect on the market.
It will.
Well, as I said, time is of the essence, and anything you can do to make this process go along quickly is good.
Absolutely.
So, my comments are, I appreciate how clearly you can educate me and others on this. You're very thorough. My master's degree is in nursing, and so this is very out of, out of my bailiwick in many ways. But I think what's so great about the Larkspur Council is that we have such a diversity of skill sets, and I usually defer to Larry for a lot of these things. And having read his recent report, this is a very, a similar explanation for me, so I appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate that.
My only question is, I know Larkspur, we have one, correct me if I'm wrong, we have one bond now that we're paying off of for our street and maintenance repair. We don't have any others that I'm aware of, so this would be a second because this has been traditionally a very risk adverse, loan adverse community, as you know, going back. So, this would be our, our second if we approve this. Let's say two years from now, there's an interest in creating a infrastructure bond to pay for retrofitting City Hall. What is your experience with our size city and our, our revenue intake, the opportunity to create a third bonding? Is it high, low, about the same?
You know what? I'm going to have...
Do you need a crystal ball?
I'm going to have Mark Pressman come up here with me. I would, I would certainly think that with your, your credit rating and the fact here, remember, when you do this deal, if you do it...
Yes.
You're going to be creating excess revenues.
Yes.
Normally, when you do a bond issue, you've got to come up with the revenues to pay for it. And it's either going to be generated from the project, or it's going to be generated because you're getting additional revenues in. Either you pass a tax measure, or just from your revenue base, you start producing more. Here, you're going to be freeing up money, so the market's going to look at that very positively.
Okay.
And then when you look at a new infrastructure that needs to be done, we would take a look at the available revenues, and if you have the sufficient revenues, you certainly have the credit that S&amp;P has given you as a very strong credit. You've got a good reputation in the market.
Say thank you, Mark.
And that should be no problem in issuing.
Okay.
As Bud would, had indicated, the rating agency looks very favorable, favorable... As Bud would, had indicated, the rating agency looks very favorable, favorably toward you being proactive and paying down your CalPERS unfunded liability. So this would be a positive from the rating agencies, and the rating agencies is more or less a reflection of the overall investment community. So this action of this pension obligation should be seen as being a positive to your financial statements. The other thing on the infrastructure, potential infrastructure down the road, as Bud indicated, you would need to identify a revenue source to be able to pay that.
Right.
And that may be out of general fund, or it may be a tax measure. So that's a bridge that you'll need to cross at, at that time. Okay? And we hope to be helping you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
By the way, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and I really appreciate your attention. You guys were very concentrated on listening and, and asked great questions, and it was a pleasure to, to participate.
Well, you're here late also.
Your presentation was very good, though. Thank you. You made it seem so simple. I'm going to, I, any more questions for the council?
Well, I need Larry's thumbs up or thumbs down.
Well, I need to go to the public.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm going to go ahead and open to the public.
James Holmes, Larkspur. How is this secured? How is this bond issue secured? And then, then I guess I'd ask, how does that security relate to the security for the prior bond?
I could answer that one.
This bond issue will be secured by the general fund of the city, the same as the CalPERS unfunded liability, and the CalPERS normal payment is secured by the city's general fund.
Currently, the city is paying the CalPERS...
But can you talk into the speaker, please?
Currently, the city is paying to CalPERS from the general fund. For example, next year it would be around a million 3. Instead of paying a million 3, the same security would only have to pay 980,000. So you would automatically be saving 400,000 in the first year using the same source of revenues that, that have, have been used.
Great. It's amazing, all these savings. Any other questions? All right? I see none. I'm going to close the public, I'm going to bring it back to the council. So we have a resolution in front of us? Do we want to discuss the resolution, have a motion?
Well, in terms of a motion, I'm ready to support staff's recommendation and move to accept Resolution 6219.
I'd like to second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? I see none. Great, it's passed. Thank you very much, gentlemen. You did a nice job. Appreciate it. Look forward to all the savings that we're going to have.
That we can spend on something else.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, really appreciate it. Very thorough. Yes. Before I adjourn, I'd like to recognize two individuals that I have passed just recently. The first gentleman is Steve Nickel. He, he owned Red Robin Catering for years here in Larkspur on Magnolia, and he also chaired the Larkspur Chamber of Commerce for, for many, many years. So Steve will be missed. And also Kevin's father, who just recently passed away, Richard Holiday Horriff. Kevin, you want to say a few words about your dad?
Well, thank, thank you, man. I appreciate that.
Oh, of course.
My dad did pass away last, last Tuesday, and I've been out of pocket for most of the last week, taking care of final arrangements for him, and he is now resting in a beautiful spot in South Carolina, underneath a very large, leafy tree. So we're very happy that he's there now. He was not happy in the latter part of his life because of various issues that he had to confront. So we will be going back in early November for a celebration of his life, and all of our families looking forward to that. So thank you very much for that recognition.
Both gentlemen will be missed. With that, I will adjourn this meeting. Done. Great. Thank you, everyone.[1780.32]